Evening, everyone. Apologize that we are running a few minutes behind. We had board and commission meetings and they took a little bit longer. Today is Monday, October 20th. Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. I'll invite the Assistant City Attorney to report out on the closed session that was held following the last meeting.
There was no reportable action on the closed session that was held on October
Are you on?
It looks on to me.
Does it sound on?
It's better.
Yeah.
Okay. There was no reportable action from the closed session that was held at the last council meeting, October 6th, I believe was the date. Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening and welcome. Whether you're here in person or joining us from home, we are glad you're here. Your engagement is what keeps our city strong. I always like to begin our meetings by recognizing our incredible city staff. You are truly the backbone of keeping the city humming every single day, every single day. And earlier today, we had an announcement of the team of the second quarter, which I'd like to share with the community. It was the finance and ERP team. And I never did find out what ERP stands for. Enterprise Resources. You know what? They've done a great job. So, we're going to congratulate Alexis Bailey, Catherine Holmes, Sean Plate, Van Bock, Rayanne Lulay, Kate Lamas, Damian Ayobio, Tessa Rednick, and Director Paul Navazio for your work. This group has demonstrated extraordinary collaboration and patience as they worked across all the different departments to implement systems that will continue to transform how we manage our city finances and human resources for years to come. Their work strengthens our foundation, supports everything we do here in the city. So, thank you and congratulations again to that team. I also want to extend a heartfelt appreciation to the many San Rafael residents who apply for our city boards and commissions. As I mentioned, we were doing interviews prior to tonight's meeting. We are so fortunate to have a community full of people who care deeply, want to contribute, and are willing to roll up their sleeves and get involved. And while we wish we could, but we can't select everyone due to the limited seats, I always want to encourage people who weren't appointed to reapply in the future. And if anyone listening tonight is interested in learning more about opportunities to serve, please visit the city clerk's webpage. All the information is there. Before we move on to the land acknowledgement, which we include as part of our opening, I want to take a moment to recognize the sudden passing of Nevada Councilmember Mark Milberg. I will adjourn tonight's meeting in his honor and share a few more words about his life at that time. Our land acknowledgement. We begin by thanking the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is located on the ancestral homeland of the Kosmewak people, many of whom today are the tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Ria. We honor their enduring relationship and their continued stewardship of the lands in San Rafael. This statement is in, compliments the work that we do in partnership with them on a regular basis. I will now turn it over to our city clerk, who will share how members of the public can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's meeting will include Spanish language in simultaneous and consecutive interpretation provided by qualified interpreters for item, Agenda Item 7B, which is the establishment of mobile food vending program and revised ordinance. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the toolbar. And if you're attending in person and don't have access to the Zoom meeting from your phone, you can come see me and I can get you set up with a device so that you can listen to the agenda item in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, when we have our interpreters going, to please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express your comments. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select Live Transcript button on Zoom to enable that feature. Community members may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comments virtually. For more information about that, or if you're experiencing a technical difficulty, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanraffel.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager for her city manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community members. I want to start off tonight sharing some exciting progress on our homelessness response efforts. Last week, as you know, we held a joint press conference with the city and the county announcing that we're establishing an interim shelter program at 350 Marydale Road, which will create 65 individual cabins and onsite social services to help residents transition into permanent housing. In the long term, the city will be working to entitle the property to create much-needed, deed-restricted, affordable housing. I want to extend a big thank you to the County of Marin team for their partnership and that $8 million investment to help the city purchase this site. Their commitment and collaboration have been essential in moving this project forward. City Council will be considering the acceptance of the $8 million grant at the city council meeting on November 17th, and then subsequently, it will be presented to the Board of Supervisors at their November 18th meeting. We recognize that any new shelter or housing program must be developed thoughtfully and with respect for the surrounding community. We will create a well-managed program that maintains the safety and well-being of nearby residents and businesses. There'll be 24/7 security onsite, regular police and fire safety evaluation support from our safe team, the city's Mobile Mental Health Crisis Team, daily maintenance, a participant code of conduct similar to what has been successfully adhered to at the sanctioned camping area at Mahone Creek that includes things like quiet hours, no loitering or camping outside the designated site area. We will also be developing a good neighbor policy to foster trust, communication, and mutual respect between the interim shelter program, its residents, and the surrounding community by setting clear expectations for operations, safety, communication, and accountability. As the program is developed, we will provide regular updates to the community on our website, social media pages, and through email. There'll be multiple opportunities for residents to learn more, ask questions, and share their feedback. Next week, we'll be hosting a virtual community meeting where we'll discuss neighborhood safety and the good neighbor policy, program details, site management, and next steps, which include evaluating the legal landscape and developing amendments to the city's camping ordinance. The meeting will be on October 28th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And there's a QR code for the meeting right there. It's also on the city's website. In early November, the city and county will also co-host an in-person open house where residents can speak directly with the subject matter experts who will be working on this project. We'll have representatives, city staff, the police department, the safe team, the county, FS Global, who's the operator, and community service provider partners who will be supporting the interim shelter site. The city's website, cityofsanraffel.org/marydale, has FAQs about the project. You can also sign up to subscribe to that webpage so that anytime there's a new information posted, you'll get an automatic email. Additionally, the homelessness webpage, the city's homelessness webpage, has been revamped to make information easier to find, including the city's response to homelessness, the current camping ordinance, and how to report any issues. We also have the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee meeting tomorrow, October 21st, which is another opportunity for public input. The meeting's at 11:00 a.m. at City Hall. Councilmember Kurtz and Mayor Kate, it will be in the upstairs conference room. You can also view the meeting online via Zoom, not participate, but you can watch. And you can find that information on the city's public meetings website. The topics on that agenda are existing tenant protections, sanctioned camping and interim shelter updates, and time for public comment. On the agenda tonight, it's United Against Hate Week. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. We partnered with Youth and Arts this year to make inspired posters with our youth. They're in the lobby on display. There's going to be a brief recess so that we can enjoy and take that in. You can also take the posters home, I hear. So, we've got a bunch. So, if you want to take some home, you're more than welcome. We have exciting visitors here for the next couple of days from Bloomberg Philanthropies. They are here as part of our final assessment for the What Works Cities certification, which is very exciting. The program sets a national standard of excellence for cities that use data and evidence to improve services and outcomes for residents. Any city in North, Central, or South America with a population of at least 30,000 people are eligible to apply for the certification. That's approximately 2,500 cities, and as of February 25th, only 104 cities have been certified. So, we hopefully, that number might have gone up a little bit in the last few months, but we're in the final stages. So, the site visit, it's an opportunity for us to demonstrate the city's commitment to data-driven governance. I want to really appreciate the digital services team for all the work that they've done to get us to this point, and we hope to announce very soon that we've been certified. We also have a public art program launch. The city and the San Rafael Arts District have launched a new public art program that will bring five public art installations to downtown by this coming summer 2026. The artist proposals are online at localeditioncreative.com-sanraffelpas. You can see them in person as well between October 20th and November 3rd, and there's a survey where you can provide input as well. So, the proposal viewings of the artist's proposals, starting today, Monday, October 20th through Friday, the 24th, will be in the City Hall lobby here, regular business hours. Then on Friday, the 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00, will be at Pond Farm. So, that should be fun, at 1848 Fourth Street. And Saturday, October 25th, they'll be from 1:00 to 3:00 at City Plaza on Fourth Street in collaboration with the Business Improvement District's Trick or Treat event. So, it's really, really exciting, and the team, Economic Development Team, the Library and Recreation Team has done a ton of work to get it to this point, so we're really excited about those public art pieces coming to San Rafael. We also have a Climate Action Forum coming up, so you can join Councilmember Micah Yaren Skoladi and Sustainability Program Manager Corey Bitoff for the Quarterly Climate Action Forum, which is Thursday, October 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 at City Hall. The forum will feature speakers on climate adaptation, greenhouse, gas trends, waste reduction, and youth-led sustainability projects. Just a few more upcoming events. It's Halloween, so we have a Second Annual Treat Walk on October 23rd, Thursday, from 4:00 to 7:00. That's at the B Street Community Center. Pumpkin decorating, face painting, all that good stuff. My kids are too old for that now, so I kind of miss those days. Movies in the Park is October 24th, 7:15 at Tara Linda Park. There's another Trick or Treat on Fourth Street, October 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And there's also a Trunker Treat with the Police Department. And then, the 37th Annual Day of the Dead Celebration is November 1st, from 3:00 to 9:00 at Alboro Center, Community Center, and there is a website for that as well. It's dayofthedeadsr.org for more information.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to report out on the meetings they've attended. Start with the Vice Mayor.
I attended the board meeting of the San Rafael Sanitation District, where we opened four different bids and awarded them, all under budget and on time. So, very proud of all of that. I also attended the board meeting of Central Marin Sanitation Agency. The big event there was a closed session item, which I cannot get into details, but I left cautiously optimistic that a mutually agreeable resolution will be forthcoming. I also attended two HOA events, one for the Peacock Gap Homeowners Association and one with the, my monthly meeting with the Montecito Area Residents Association.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, you ready?
Sure. The large, the most significant one that I attended this last time was CalCity's Annual Conference down in Long Beach, which was a good experience. And it'll be very memorable to me because Councilmember Mark Milberg and I spent quite a bit of time together right before, unfortunately, he passed suddenly. The, I attended the open house by the San Rafael Fire Department and Police Department. It was fantastic. It was really great to see everything, especially the drone and the Jaws of Life. Thought that was very interesting. And also, Fire Foundation had a community event out at Andy's Market in La Clomena that same weekend. I attended the Marin Latino Leaders Luncheon, where they honored and recognized Maria Nigle from the Child Commission, and that was great. And then, our press conference for 350 Marydale, and I also had attended the Mont Marin San Rafael Park Ice Cream Social.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. With Councilmember Kurtz, I also attended the open house at the Public Safety Center. I'll elaborate a little bit further about what happened with the Jaws of Life. An abandoned vehicle was taken to the parking lot, and a full demonstration by a fire department was performed to open the hood with a big saw, and then the Jaws of Life to rip the door off, which was really, I'd never seen it before. And then, they also had a K-9 unit demonstration with a guy in a full suit. It was really something to see. So, just elaborate a little bit further what the Jaws of Life was. And I also attended the press conference with Councilmember Kurtz. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Yes, I have a few things to report because I missed the last meeting, but I attended the CalMatters, it's California and the Future of Climate Policy in San Francisco. That was through MCE Clean Energy, and it's very interesting just to see what's happening at the state level, based also on the federal level, what's happening right now. Also attended MCE Clean Energy Board of Directors Meeting and an executive meeting as well for MCE. On September 20th, I participated on the coastal cleanup day. I'm going back a month ago, almost, but it was just amazing to have our community coming together. There was like a big group from the, from the Scouts, so it was, it's always such a beautiful event. And that day also was the reopening of the library ribbon cutting, and I'm sure that you already talked about this in the last meeting, but it was such a beautiful event. And I'm just so, so happy that with all the, the new facilities that we have. And I'm sure, I'm going to skip that one. I have to say, I attended the San Rafael Fire Department badge pinning and award ceremony. I know that you probably talked about it as well, but it was, it's so fabulous. It's one of my favorite events once a year, so. Also attended the Sustainable San Rafael 20th Anniversary Party with a special recognition for Bill Carney, very well deserved. Most councils and mayor were all there. Attended the annual BID meeting mixer. It was a tutu lunch in downtown, and it was really great to see so many businesses participating and really involved. So, as a former business owner downtown San Rafael, I always love to participate on those. Also attended the San Rafael Chamber, had an event called Inside the Founder's Mind, Strategies to Stand Out, Build Trust, and Secure the Future, and that was focused on founders and nonprofit organizations. So, our great chamber not only supports our local businesses, but also the nonprofit organizations as well. Attended also the CalCity's Annual Conference with Councilmember Kurtz. I think my favorite workshop was talking about transportation with Assemblywoman Lori Wilson, the director from Bard was there, and they talk about the Skyway system in Oakland, so air taxis are coming. So, that was fascinating. Also attended the Great Communities Collaborative, is JCC's 20th Anniversary Celebration. Mayor Kate was joining us as well. It was at Junto's Fruitvale in Oakland, and one of the panel speakers was actually Omar Carrera, the CEO from Canada Alliance, speaking about the amazing partnerships that we have here in the city of San Rafael between local government, with the county, nonprofit organizations, also private organizations and businesses. So, it was, I felt really proud to be able to witness that. And then, finally, the same day, I participated in the Pickleweed Park Enhancement Project Ribbon Cutting Celebration, and that was just fabulous to be able to use the new field and having the community there. So, I look forward to many, many events there. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll report out on the events I attended. The TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin, we had a clean fleet expo, which was electric vehicles of very large sizes. There were buses, there were street sweepers, and the electric vehicle revolution is live and well and coming our way. There were hefty price tags with all of those, but part of it is just having an opportunity to talk to the vendors and how they can start to become a part of our community, those vehicles. There were three ribbon cuttings I was able to attend. You mentioned the Pickleweed Park. If you haven't been out there, there's a beautiful new all-weather field that was already getting lots of use. A couple soccer balls came through as we were doing the dedication, so it was fantastic. We also have two new businesses in San Rafael. One is in downtown San Rafael, across from the Rafael Theater, the Sip and Bite Cafe and Go Hungry, because the pastries, the cookies, they have real bites as well, it was delicious. So, they just opened up. And then, we also had The Cave. That is in East San Rafael, over by Smart and Final, and The Cave is a place where you can practice your parkour skills or gymnastic skills if you are 18 and under. But if you're older than that, they do have a drop-in adult parkour night on Monday and Wednesday. It looked like a lot of different ways. I think you could hurt yourself, but it was fantastic. The Cave has been in Corte de Vera for 18 years, and we are thrilled that they have invested in San Rafael. It is a very large, very, very busy space. Tonight, on tonight's agenda, we have the food ordinance. I was able to partake in the East San Rafael Working Group Conversation. Greg Minor with the city staff was there as well and presented, just talking with the businesses out in East San Rafael, what the council will be considering this evening in terms of the food ordinance. Some more to come on that on our agenda. The Public Safety Open House, I missed those great displays, but I was there early for the donuts, so I guess it all worked out. Councilmember Kurtz mentioned the Marin Latino Leaders. It was an honor. The city gave a resolution for Maria Nigle, and it was an honor that I was able to speak to her and give her that resolution on behalf of the council. And then, finally, Smart. I am your representative on the Sonoma Marin Ariat Rapid Transit. The ridership from September of this past year was 31% higher than September of 2024. The Smart Shuttle, of which there are two, one's up in the airport, near the Sonoma Airport, the other one's in Larkspur, so if you wanted to go from Smart to the ferry, where we voted and extended the contract due to the incredible success for those shuttles. The, the usage numbers continue to just go through the roof. And then, we had an update on all the pathways that the voters had voted on when they approved Smart, and 71% of the pathways are either completed or funded. So, continue to make progress on that. So, as always, there's always a lot of work going on between the city council meetings, and I appreciate having the opportunity for my colleagues to talk about what they've been up to, as well as the city manager. We know you've heard a lot on that, and always, we like to invite public comment on anything that you've just heard in terms of the city manager and council member reports. If you would like to comment, now is your opportunity to do so.
Not, are you coming? Oh, I have my glasses on. If you want, come on down, don't be shy. The door doesn't say. And you are invited, but not required, to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in. Oh, wait, hold on a second. There you go. It's all yours.
Hi, my name is Brent McLean, and I am based in San Rafael Meadows, near the Tiny Home project. And I wanted to express my strong opposition to this specific site in regards to location. My big concern is the direct proximity to our residential neighborhood, where my family and I live, and the safety of our children and neighbors. Our neighborhood is one where children frequently play outside, walk between adjacent homes, and enjoy the communal aspects of our neighborhood. This introduction to this project so close to where our children live and play introduces an unpredictable element that impacts the community we've built so hard over the years. While I understand and sympathize with the need to address homelessness, my big concern is the location. And to be very clear, right next to a very young, family-oriented neighborhood where kids... kids and families have built their lives. The other concern that I would bring up, and I think I speak for a lot of my neighbors, is we felt pretty blindsided by this project, right? And, you know, we met as a neighborhood yesterday, and that was a common talking point, right? That all of a sudden, the Marin IJ landed on our doorsteps, and we learned about homeless encampment coming in adjacent to our neighborhood. Again, I really appreciate it, and I understand and sympathize with how difficult the homelessness problem is, but the site, I think, should really be reevaluated with the location next to our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments on the reports that you just heard?
My name is Sherwin Deemer. I'm president of the Monocity Area Residents Association. I thought these comments were about the city council members' involvement, and I just wanted to thank you for the amazing work and time and energy you put in to come and meet with us and hear our concerns. And I encourage anyone who would like to meet their city council to invite them. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the city manager or council member reports? And again, you're not required, but you're invited to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Yes, my name is Phil Downs, Sr., from Terre Linda. I bought my first home in San Rafael Meadows and raised four children there. I am alarmed, deeply alarmed, at the full weight of government approach to this 350 Marydale project. You had McGuire, Connolly, Sackett, yourself, Madam Mayor, the Health Department. There was lip service done to this idea that there'll be 24/7 security at the site. We're going to bring services to the site. But as the eloquent gentleman alluded to, there's nothing done for the neighborhood. This is the most ridiculous idea I've ever heard of in my life. And the thing that's shocking is it displays an underlying arrogance that the full weight of state, county, and city government can just snap their fingers and make this happen without any kind of input from the community whatsoever. And I think you're making a big mistake. These hardcore homeless from Mahon Creek that should have never existed in the first place are now going to be transplanted into a neighborhood with at least three childcare centers, okay? Hard-working Latino families with small children inhabit the apartment buildings directly adjacent to this site. Plus the fact, San Rafael Meadows, you've got people who have just spent, the last listing I saw was $1.4 million. These people are working their tails off, and now you're going to say, welcome to the suburbs. Here are your new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I'll just reiterate what the city manager said, because it might have been lost, because I know we definitely want to hear your input. There will be a both virtual and in-person meeting, because not everyone can come down on a Monday night. So there'll be a virtual meeting on October 28th, I think you said, and that information's on the FAQ page. If you go into the city of San Rafael, type in 350 Marydale, and then there'll also be in-person. We have received some really thoughtful emails around having in-person, so that will also be scheduled. So I just wanted to be clear, tonight, your opportunity is always to comment, because we did bring it up during the council member reports. We're not discussing any project. There's no decision being made about the project this evening, and there will be additional community input. I just wanted to say that, because I felt like some of that might have been missed. So welcome, you're invited to say your name, but not required, and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Awesome, thank you. I'm Ashley, and I live in.
Lift up.
This. Oh, okay, cool. Thanks. Can everyone hear me? Okay, awesome. I'm Ashley, I live in the Rafael Meadows area. I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as the last gentleman, but we are thrilled that you guys focus on our unhoused neighbors, and we want to reiterate that we're not okay with the location of the encampment. I have a two-year-old daughter, who I want to feel safe having run around the neighborhood when she's five, six, seven, eight. I grew up in Marin. I had that safety, and my child deserves it as well. We have a serious problem with the way that this was communicated to us. I didn't get a flyer, I didn't get anything, I don't get the IJ. That's on me, but I was informed about this from a neighbor sending me a screenshot of something that she saw on the internet, and that's kind of what has rallied a lot of us. We don't feel that that's acceptable. We were left in the dark. When I spoke with nearby businesses, they were informed weeks ago. That feels that we were intentionally left out, because I think that there was anticipated pushback, right? This is a family neighborhood, this is somewhere where at least 10 to 15 children under the age of three live right now, at a minimum. The lack of transparency has eroded our trust in you guys, and we want clear and honest answers. I appreciate you addressing our requests for an in-person meeting. Thank you. So we will definitely be taking advantage of that, and I think we, as a community, will be here to make our opinions known. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. And also on the webpage, on the city website, because I hear you about how do we have information where people's eyes are, there's a place that you can sign up to receive updates, so that way you don't actually have to hunt around for it.
Hi, my name is Kim, and I also live in the Rafael Meadow area. My house is 404 Corolla Drive, which is right at the end of Marydale. I have been there for eight years. I bought the house hoping to live there, live out my life there. Recently, the city of San Rafael cut down some trees that totally exposed 350 Marydale from the back of my home. I'm concerned about the people possibly hanging out there. They can literally look right in the back of my house. I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe for my neighbors. I think that the whole way, I found out about it with a flyer that was put on my front door on Friday, and I literally was walking my dog back there last week, and I saw the setup of your little meeting. I wish I would have known what it was all entailing, because I would have dropped in with my dog and listened in. And this, I think, is taking our whole neighborhood by surprise. It's a safe community. I've had to call the Santa Fel Police Department at least six times with people living in the back by the creek, people screaming, yelling. I fear for my safety. I live alone. So I really think you guys need to consider something a little bit better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the reports?
Hello, I'm going to get through this pretty quick. I only got two minutes. Sorry for the lack of eye contact. I'm here as a member of the Santa Fel Meadows neighborhood, husband and father of two toddlers. I'd like to address safety concerns for the surrounding neighborhoods with a proposal of a 65-unit homeless residence at 350 Marydale Road. As a constituent, I just want a logical and informed decision to be made for the location of this program. I do not believe a complete and thorough analysis has been done on the location of the proposal. For instance, how many senior living centers are in the neighborhood? How many daycares are in the neighborhood? What is the child population in the area? How do these compare to other locations in San Rafael? On the Santa Fel Police Department website, I reviewed the last month's arrests in San Rafael. A large number of arrests were in and around the Mahone Pathway and Anderson Drive encampment. These are the populations that will be moved to the Marydale location. Was a crime statistic evaluation done for the area of Mahone and Anderson? Was the same done for Marydale? Was there a comparison? What was the number of generated police calls for service in the area of Mahone and Anderson over the last year? What was the number for Marydale? Was there a comparison? Mental health and substance abuse resources are included for residents of this site, which shows clientele are known and expected to have these issues. A full security team will also be needed to police members of this new site. Why? Safety concerns? The homeless tab of the city website states, "The city of San Rafael is committed to addressing homelessness with compassion and accountability. Our goal is to honor the dignity of every person while ensuring that public spaces remain safe, clean, and accessible to all. It is the city's responsibility to protect the vulnerable classes of our population, which include the elderly and children. I believe when presented with these facts, it would be negligent to place this program in this location. When presented with all the facts, statistics, and information about the Marydale location, it will be overwhelmingly clear to people voting on this plan, an alternate site would be in the best interest of the San Rafael population as a whole. I hope you're able to show our neighbors the same compassion you are showing to the homeless of San Rafael. May God bless you all and have a good night. Thank you for your time."
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? You're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Noel Stenberg, resident of 260 Marydale, and also board member of the Homeowners Association. It's a 29-unit condominium, and we are immensely disappointed and appalled by the city of San Rafael's actions and disapprove.
Anyone else like to comment before we move on? Go ahead.
My name is Sue, and I live in the Rafael Meadows. I've been there 40 years. I just have to say that it is the most incredibly safe and family-oriented community that in San Rafael. People come from all over San Rafael for Halloween, for Christmas. We have little, you know, events that the neighborhood puts on. So it really upsets me that I had to learn about this encampment that you're going to be placing in our neighborhood on next door. I mean, normally people complain about, you know, their neighbors on next door, but this was really something that really got me stirred up, and I don't normally say things. But I'm just wondering, I mean, have you looked at other options? I mean, and what kind of permanent housing are these people going to be able to afford? I mean, rents now are $2,000, $3,000 a month. Where are these people going to go? Is it going to be a permanent situation for them? I mean, have you looked at other empty buildings like the theater over on Smith Ranch Road? That could be placed into, modified into like senior living apartments or something like that. I'm really concerned that you've chosen this site because of the sadness of how people have, you know, developed in their homelessness, but I'm certainly hopeful that we can have an in-person meeting, because it really, we have a lot to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll just reiterate, so there'll be both a virtual meeting and an in-person meeting, so that way it's the widest group. So on October 28th will be a virtual meeting, and you can find the information online, and then there'll be an in-person meeting. I think the community was very clear that was important, and we agree. Hopefully, we'll have an onsite. And I do want to underscore the FAQ. Some of the questions I'm hearing are actually, I think there's some clarity on the webpage. So I can't really say much more than that, because it's not an agendized item, and it will be agendized. The last part I should mention, and again, city manager, I don't know if you mentioned it, it won't be an agendized meeting until, sorry, agendized item, where we can talk about it, until November 17th. So that's the day that we could actually hear that there'll be a decision made. Okay. So I just wanted to repeat that again, because I felt like I wasn't getting through. Go ahead.
My name's Walt Pedersen. I've been in Santa Fel for 60 years. I've lived contractor here, retired. I've seen periods of this town where anybody could buy anything they wanted in a building permit, and mayors and people like that, not here now. But, so it was an era that was pretty criminal, really. And what happens here is, how long have you people known about this? There's no transparency, and I understand there's supposed to be laws that cover transparency. Have you violated those laws? Nobody knew, I knew about this Friday, I guess. And I don't live there, but I have a piece of property I own there. And there's other places to build it. They're running the Christmas tree farm out of the civic center out there. Why can't they use that? It's a big parcel there. There's transportations right there. They can put toilet facilities, portables, and it just seems like this is all run past, it's too fast. There are no environmental impact reports, there's no input from homeowners, and it just doesn't seem right. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Hope you can make one of the meetings, either the webinar or the in-person.
Hello.
Lift the microphone up, I can already tell it's not.
Tonight, I want to speak about the proposed homeless shelter and camp being planned for the old school at 350 Marydale. This planning process appears to have moved far along without any notice to the surrounding residents and property owners. The process to develop such a space should include all members of the surrounding community. To date, it has not. I received the flyer just a few days ago that lists the site and number of units. This indicates that significant planning and the decision to go forward has already taken place. Members of the community should have been given the opportunity to comment on such a proposed project, to keep us in the dark, instead of keeping us in the dark until the last moment. The planned Zoom meeting on the 28th will likely be inadequate for all the concerns being voiced, due to the fact that it has a time limit. Furthermore, all questions should be addressed in an open forum for all to hear. This meeting should be held in-person and allow all time for necessary for concerns to be expressed. I ask that this planning process be put on hold until such time that adequate input of all community members can be heard and have their concerns addressed.
Thank you. So again, there'll be, and then the webinar will also be recorded in case you can't make it, or if you can't make the in-person dialogue, which I agree with you, that's important. Go ahead, you might want to bring the microphone up. I can tell it's too small. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carter. I live in the Santa Fel Meadows, born and raised in Marin. First and foremost, I just want to say that, you know, we demand transparency through this process and feel like we've been intentionally shut out with the discussions and decisions being made here. Normal procedures, I believe, require a bit more structure, and that lack of communication has eroded our trust. Therefore, we request that you immediately pause or suspend any votes on this project. You mentioned the November 17th meeting. I believe the votes are scheduled for the 16th and 17th, the council votes, if I'm not mistaken, unless those votes have changed, but that's what was on the IJ. So hopefully, we can pause or suspend those votes on that project. This will allow meaningful community engagement and input before decisions are made. Thank you for doing a roundtable discussion with the neighborhood, in addition to the Zoom, as it is limited and it's not the best way to engage the community. We also have other significant concerns around neighborhood safety, sanitation, and overflow. That's a big concern. These need to be addressed with clear, actionable plans with robust mitigation strategies. And we just lack a lot of information about the project specifics. We need clarity on the ownership status. Do you own the land? That hasn't been clearly designed. What's the unit design of these tiny homes? We need a detailed provision of essential services. Without these fundamentals, we really can't even evaluate our community and decide on how we can move forward on this. So we hope that you listen to us, sit down with us, and do it, and pause any votes in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll clarify, I can't speak to the IJ article. November 16th is actually a Sunday, so it will come to the San Rafael City Council on November 17th, and the Marin County Board of Supervisors on November 18th. And we will have both the webinar and the in-person prior to those. So again, no decision, I just want to be very clear, there's no decision happening here tonight. You're speaking to it because it was mentioned during our council member reports, but that's why we're just listening, but I just want to share the community involved in going forward. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Owen Sheeran, and I'm a homeowner in Rafael Meadows. I live there with my wife and our two young children. Our community deeply believes in helping the homeless and working with the city to find compassionate, effective solutions. However, we are extremely concerned about the proposed project at 350 Marydale Road, specifically its impact on public safety and the quality of life in our neighborhood. What concerns us most right now is the lack of community involvement in the planning stages of this project. It feels as though there was a deliberate effort to move forward without public input. As our elected officials, you are failing our community of hard-working taxpayers for the sake of optics of cleaning up downtown. It's your duty to represent the voices of your constituents. We deserve to be heard on decisions that directly affect our families and our communities. Tonight, I'm asking two things, and one was already addressed. First, we need a community town hall meeting, and we appreciate that being set up, where residents can be, can share our opinions, ask questions, and offer ideas. The Zoom meeting scheduled for October 28th appears to be just a presentation of decisions already made behind closed doors, and that's not true community engagement. Second, we ask that you postpone the city vote on November 17th and the county vote on November 18th, until residents have had a real opportunity to participate. Less than a month's notice is simply not enough. Thank you for your time and listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the city manager or council member reports? And you're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Andrew. I live at 213 Los Colinas Avenue in San Rafael Meadows. And Mayor, I got to say, you keep referring to the upcoming meetings, but you're missing the point, because those, you've already made commitments, you've already made decisions about this without public input. So the future meetings. So the future meetings are going to throw us a bone and that's about it. Okay. So I'm here to address 350, the homeless site at 350 Marydale. And I ask that the October 28th meeting be changed to a public in-person meeting, not just a Zoom meeting. I have actually been tracking this project and looking for city council meetings, waiting for public meetings on it, but there have been none. Since March, the city council has had nine closed session meetings on the site with no reported actions. And yet the city has now made commitments of public funds to the project without public input. The last city council closed session meeting was on August 11th. And the city minutes from August 18th stated, quote, "Chief Assistant City Attorney Andrea Vasichua", I know I just bastardized that, excuse me, "Assistant City Attorney announced that no reportable action was taken in closed session earlier that evening on August 11th, which was the last closed session meeting on the project, or on July 21st." So there's been no reported actions from the closed, from the secret closed session meetings. Most recently was the October 15th press announcement conducted at 350 Marydale. And Mayor, I want to play a recorded statement you made at that press announcement. It's about 20 seconds.
We want them informed. We want them involved. We want to address their concerns. We want them to be a part of this project and the success of this project.
If you have anything else that you would like to say this evening?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
Though there have been no such outreach, I request that you postpone whatever action you have planned for November 17th and first hold a series of public meetings to receive input on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for your comments this evening. I think we've been clear and we understand the frustration and you have the information of what will happen next for future input. So with that, we are going to go forward to the consent agenda and we hope that folks that are here stay for the rest of the meeting. We have the illegal food vending. We have some special presentations and we would love to have you participate in the entire meeting this evening, including our work plan with our goals and objectives, which actually outlines what the city is going to do over the next year. The first item, or the next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be closed, to be polled? Okay. So if you'd like to comment on the consent agenda, and I will note that I will read the proclamation after the consent agenda for the National First Responders Day. So anyone would like to comment on the consent agenda, items 5A through 5E, now would be your opportunity. Not seen any. I'll bring it back. And I will just highlight, and we highlighted it in the last meeting, on consent agenda 5B, it does, not 5B, sorry, 5D, it shows that San Rafael Police brought in nearly $500,000 for the ongoing use of participation of a SAFE team, which is our mobile mental health crisis. We talked about it in our last meeting. So it's on the consent agenda this evening. So I would entertain a motion on this item, please.
I'll make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. We have two special presentations. I want to make sure I do this in the correct format. So we will read the one for the National First Responders Day and then also the one for the United Against Hate. And then we'll take a recess to look at the art. And then we'll also be a photo op. Okay. So I will read the National First Responders Day. Actually, I should take public comment first. There's a lot going on this evening. So if you'd like to make public comment on either of these special proclamations that I'm about to read, one is National First Responders Day or United Against Hate, now would be your opportunity. Okay, not seen any. Now I will go ahead and read. Whereas first responders, including police officers, firefighters, paramedics, communication dispatchers, other emergency personnel and public works professionals stand on the front lines of our communities, selflessly serving and protecting the residents of San Rafael in times of crisis. Whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others. Whether in national disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats, public health and safety threats. And whereas 2025 marks the 7th Annual National First Responders Day, sponsored by bipartisan, bipartisan resolutions in the United States Senate and House of Representatives, definitely something we all get behind. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of San Rafael proclaim October 28th as National First Responders Day. And we urge all community members to join us in paying tribute to our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, public works, professionals, paramedics, communication dispatchers and other emergency personnels to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety and advancing the quality of life for all. I'm so glad that we could read this proclamation and we'll have a photo after. Oh, you want a photo now? I'm sorry, I'm looking at Madam State Clerk. Okay, the mic wasn't on. She said, I'm going to read both and then we'll do a photo. Okay. The next proclamation is United Against Hate Week. Whereas we hereby issue this proclamation to publicly condemn bias and hate in all forms. And we affirm our community values of respect, inclusivity, civility and equity for all and urge every organization or community to stand with us. And whereas deep divisions within our country are the result of extreme ideology, further strengthening a cycle of mistrust fueled by fear, anxiety and insecurity. And whereas the Constitution enshrines equality for all individuals regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation and expression, religion, disability, socioeconomic status, education, language or political views. And whereas each of us has a role to play in stopping hate and creating safe, inclusive communities and schools for everyone in our city. And whereas education and compassion are key to unlocking, understanding and embracing differences between people. This United Against Hate Week is an important step in bridging those divisions. And whereas in the city council's strategic plan for fiscal years 25 to 20, 2025 to 28, we identify equity, access, belonging and opportunity for all as a priority. And whereas together our community can stand united against hate, not just this week, but every day. Now therefore be it resolved that we hereby proclaim October 19th to the 25th as United Against Hate Week in the city of San Rafael and pledge the city's full support of the San Rafael chapter of Not in Our Town. I know it takes a moment to read these, but it's important that we do take these moments to both recognize our national, our first responders in our community that serve us as well as our value statement of uniting against hate. So we have, we get to have a little recess. We have, the city has partnered with the youth and arts to host a poster design contest celebrating the spirit and meaning of United Against Hate. We had outstanding participation from 80 students, including students from Coleman, Bahia Vista, San Valley and San Pedro. Our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging committee had the difficult task of selecting two posters from each school that best captured the creativity and inspiration of this week. These talented student artists will receive certificates of recognition from the city. So we'll take just a five-minute recess. We'll go look at the art, maybe meet some of the neighbors that were here previously in the meeting and we'll definitely take some photos. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So a five-minute recess. Thank you all. Anyone else want to comment on the consent agenda? I'm here to read the proclamation. The next thing is the consent agenda. 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 The next thing is the consent agenda.
Just an announcement for the audience. If you're looking for Spanish language interpretation, that will start at item 7B.
Thank you all. Are we ready to go again? Yes, we are. Thank you for taking the recess. And if you didn't get a chance to look at the art, you can always look at it on your way out and it will be in the lobby for a little bit. So our first public hearing is the Triennial Fire Code Ordinance Amendments. And I am looking to the city manager for this item.
Oh!
Hi, Chief Senate. Welcome.
Welcome, Chief Senate.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and Council. The California Fire Codes are the final California code documents you will be considering for adoption. It follows a suite of building code documents you reviewed last month. As with the building codes, this process occurs every three years. In simple terms, the California Building Code regulates how buildings are built. It sets the rules for design, construction and materials to make sure a building is safe, strong and accessible. The California Fire Code regulates how buildings are used and maintained after they're, after they're built. It sets the rules for fire safety, prevention and emergency access during the life of the building. In short, the Building Code ensures safe construction. The Fire Code ensures safe operation. The California Fire Marshal's Office oversees developing the California Fire Code from the International Fire Code. It is modified for specific hazards and challenges found in our state. Once this process is completed, which occurred earlier this calendar year, cities, counties and independent fire districts can then review and if necessary, further amend the California Fire Code to meet its needs. These are known as local amendments. These are known as local amendments. The 2025 California Fire Code, along with the building codes, become law on January 1, 2026, regardless of whether any action is taken by agency-elected bodies. However, if the agency desires to have local amendments, the elected body must formally approve the new code 30 days before it becomes effective, in this case, by December 1, 2025. We are not proposing any new local amendments for the 2025 Fire Code. Rather, with your approval, existing local amendments that have been in place for several code cycles will remain. These amendments are uniform with all agencies through Marin to promote consistency and reduce confusion for property owners, contractors, and developers. There are no substantial changes to the 2025 California Fire Code. The members of the Marin County Fire Prevention Officers Association have held multiple meetings over the past several months reviewing the new code. There is one significant format change in the 2025 code cycle. This is the creation of the new California Wild Urban Interface Code. Although the codebook is new, the WUI provisions are taken from existing codebooks, the 2022 additions of the California Building Code, the California Fire Code, and the California Residential Code, placing these WUI provisions into a single codebook. The ordinance before you tonight include both codebooks, similar to how the suite of building codes were combined into a single ordinance. In conclusion, the recommended action is to introduce the ordinance, waive further reading, and refer to it by title only, and set a public hearing for November 3, 2025. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I'll see if there are any questions from the council on this item. Not seen any questions. I'll open up the public comment. If you'd like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity. Not seen any. I'll close the public comments and see if there are any additional comments before we make a motion. Councilmember Kurtz, do you want to make some comments or then a motion?
No.
Oh, no comments? Okay. I'll just say thank you, Chief, for that presentation and for bringing this forward. And I'm glad that the WUI additional codebook isn't new. It's just, it's the way it's been organized, is what I heard you say. So it's not like we're expanding the WUI or changing it and how we address it. It's just, okay. That was really my only comment. Okay. Not seen any comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
Introduce the ordinance, waive further reading, and refer to it by title only, and set a public hearing for November 3, 2025.
Second.
Would you, do we need to read the title?
I'll be reading it.
Oh, you're reading the title. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. I request the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Centerfell City Council amending Chapter 4.08 of the Centerfell Municipal Code to adopt by reference the California Fire Code 2025 Edition with local amendments based on the International Fire Code 2024 Edition and the 2025 International Wildland Urban Interface Code based on the 2024 International Wildland Urban Interface Code and adopting findings of fact supporting amendments to such codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item. Thank you, Chief. So the interpretation will begin, so I'm reminding everyone, including myself, to speak slowly. This is item, the next item, we are on, make sure I get the letter right, seven B. It is the establishment of mobile food vending program and revised ordinance. It looks like Assistant City Manager Robinson Pinion will be presenting.
Good afternoon. Excuse me, good evening, everyone. It's been a long day. Just want to introduce Greg Minor, Assistant Director of Community and Economic Development, who will be leading us off on a presentation about the city's proposed mobile food vending program. And also, she'll be making some brief comments later, but I also want to acknowledge Sarah Jones, who's here from the county, who oversees their community development department, as well as includes environmental health to provide some brief comments as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Assistant Director Greg Minor.
All right. Good evening, Greg Minor, as Angela just mentioned, with Community Economic Development. Mobile vending. Okay, so why are we talking about mobile vending? First off, back in June, when the city council adopted a strategic plan, that's going to be discussed as the next item on the council's agenda, the city council specifically adopted Goal E61, which was to revise the street food vending ordinance and develop an implementation enforcement and communications plan. And the catalyst for that goal was the fact that there are multiple challenges involved with the state of mobile vending in Centerfell at the moment. First off, from kind of the general community's perspective, unpermitted food vending can lead to different public health and, you know, public nuisance issues could lead to the spread of foodborne illness. There could be improper disposal of the grease from the cooking or trash from customers, blocking of the sidewalk, preventing potentially people with disabilities from passing in the public right of way. There can be noise from people operating late at night. If people are, operators are not operating with any permits, it's likely they're not operating with a business tax certificate. They're not contributing any sales or business tax to the city, so it creates an unlevel playing field for businesses that are abiding by different rules and regulations. From the perspective of neighbors or residents or customers, if you will, the fact that there are so many vendors and mobile vendors in, excuse me, Centerfell is an indication that there's a need for access to affordable food. So that's another challenge. From the vendor's perspective, there's lots of challenges involved in getting permitted. And obtaining a health permit in particular can be a challenge. Finding access to a commercial kitchen or commissary can sometimes be a challenge. Meeting technical requirements for a push cart can also be expensive and a challenge. And lastly, from the perspective of code enforcement or the city's code enforcement division in particular, enforcement has been a challenge, both from a resource perspective, because our code enforcement staff are, they're fully booked. Their bingo card is fully, fully laid out with other programs they're managing. They're inspecting all kinds of properties and businesses. And then on top of that, when they are able to go out and enforce, the strategies that we've been implementing to date have not been fully effective, as I'll mention in a second. So there's multiple reasons for that goal that the city council adopted earlier in the summer. The next slide here is, includes a map from one of the attachments to the staff report. Thank you to Walter Gonzalez in our city manager's office and the digital services team for putting, they gathered data from complaints about food vending or vending in the city. And complaints are not a perfect representation of activity because they are a representation of complaints, not necessarily actions that are taking place. But it gives you a snapshot in terms of where the activity is taking place. And this heat map in particular kind of gives you a sense of the complaints and activities largely focused in the canal and downtown neighborhoods. There's also some data in the report that's highlighted here in that, generally speaking, the complaints are highest in the warmer months, such as September, and lowest, lower in the wintertime, such as January. And from staff's interactions in the field, and we mentioned some of this at the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting, the vast majority of the vendors are from, are generally out, from outside of Centerfell. However, a significant percentage of, perhaps around 25% are Centerfell vendors themselves. So before we jump into what should the city do about mobile vending, and wanted to highlight that there are laws in place that restrict what we, the city can and can't do. Again, as was discussed at the Economic Development Subcommittee. The state legislature has passed a couple of different bills aimed at lowering barriers for mobile vendors in recent years. And the one that...
Excuse me.
Sure.
If I can request to slow down your comments a little bit, so we can effectively interpret.
No problem. Sorry. So the main state law that limits how local jurisdictions can regulate sidewalk vending was passed in 2019, Senate Bill 946. The goal of Senate Bill 946 is spelled out on the screen here, which was to promote entrepreneurship and support immigrant and low-income communities. And what SB 946 does is it restricts how local governments, such as cities, can restrict sidewalk vending in that local governments can only utilize objective health, safety, or welfare concerns when it comes to deciding whether and how sidewalk vending can take place in that jurisdiction. SB 946 also eliminated criminal penalties for sidewalk vending, and it limited, it limits penalties to administrative fines or permit suspension or revocations. There are a couple of other specific things that SB 946 does. It's mentioned more in the staff report. But cities still can prohibit side, you know, stationary vendors in residential zones. You can prohibit sidewalk vendors from locating near a farmer's market. There are other examples of things that cities can do. But in general, SB 946 restricts cities to just focusing on objective health and safety concerns as opposed to, say, economic concerns about economic competition between mobile vendors and brick-and-mortar establishments. That would not be a lawful basis for a city to establish a regulation. And then lastly, before jumping to staff's recommendations, just wanted to highlight the process that was the foundation for these recommendations. The process largely, these recommendations were largely informed by the Together Centerfell Academy that took place last fall and winter and spring, which was an interdepartmental program that the city put in place to encourage staff to kind of think outside of the box, to consider the perspectives of different stakeholders for different problems, and in this case, mobile vendors and, or mobile vending, rather. The process included interviewing different stakeholders, such as those listed on the screen. We visited the City of Richmond's sponsored marketplace, which is shown in the picture here. We reviewed the different state laws that are in place, including SB 946. And then more recently, we presented to different stakeholders in the Economic Development Subcommittee. So with that, we, staff's recommendation is to take a three-pronged approach. The three prongs consisting of enhancing our enforcement measures, supporting local entrepreneurs, and offering paths to legalization, all together with the goal of promoting a healthy, accessible, and vibrant community. And I'll break those down one at a time. So with respect to enforcement, by adopting an ordinance establishing time, place, and manner restrictions, such as the ordinance proposed in the, in the item before you tonight, the city can establish restrictions to ensure that mobile vendors don't block the sidewalk, dispose of their trash from any customers appropriately, dispose of any grease produced by the cooking appropriately. But it's also, as we again discussed at the subcommittee level, it's one thing to have rules, it's another thing to actually enforce the rules. And so with respect to the resource challenge, we've identified some funding in our community economic development budget to fund a consultant that we could pilot in the spring of next year to kind of enhance our resources to address unpermitted vending. And we've also been partnering with Marin County's Environmental Health Services Division because they have authority under state laws with respect to food that the city does not, which includes the authority to impound equipment from unpermitted vendors who are not deterred by citations or the seizure of food. As I alluded to earlier, although our code enforcement staff has issued citations and in some instances, Marin County Environmental Health Staff has impounded food, the vendors sometimes will, will break out new food and continue operating. And in some, in at least one instance, have informed staff, please take my equipment, otherwise they're going to send me back. So there's larger forces at work, and unfortunately, the existing enforcement mechanisms haven't proven sufficient. So we wanted to be able to add another tool in the toolbox. But beyond enforcement, the, and establishing rules, the ordinance also offers paths to legalization. It provides both opportunities for vendors who want to vend in the public right of way on the sidewalk, as well as on private property, if they have the permission of a private property owner. And that could be an opportunity for a food hall or marketplace and potentially economies of scale and opportunities for organize, an event organizer to help coordinate compliance. And there's opportunities for sort of a win-win-win in a model such as that. Now we continue to provide the customers and the broader community with opportunities to access affordable food options. And then the last pillar is the strategy of supporting local entrepreneurship. And I apologize if I've been speaking too quickly. With respect to local entrepreneurs, as I mentioned earlier, it can be a challenge coming into compliance. So another strategy we recommend is investing at least $25,000 that we've identified in our department's budget to partner with a community-based organization to provide bilingual technical assistance to local entrepreneurs that are interested in coming into compliance. I think the first step of that process will be confirming what are the barriers with compliance, whether it's access to a shared kitchen or just navigating the permitting processes, and then potentially establishing a food park destination if that is, if that is a desire and need of those entrepreneurs. In terms of timing, the, we have a bit of, we have a bit of homework ahead of us. Even if the council adopts the legislation this evening, we would need to create an application by, you know, educational materials in multiple languages to make folks aware of the permitting process. We'd also need to finalize a lot of the details with our enforcement collaboration with the county to clarify the protocols for when it would be appropriate to seize equipment from an unpermitted vendor and provide due process opportunities for vendors to obtain their equipment in return. So in general, we want to take advantage of the fact that mobile vending and complaints sometimes dip in the winter to kind of put all these projects in motion so that when the, the spring and summer periods start next season, next year, rather, we can hit the ground running with these programs in place. So happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your consideration. Oh, excuse me. One, one point I kind of skipped over in terms of providing a path to compliance. In addition to the permitting process, there is a resolution to adopt a fee for vendors to obtain a permit. There's an application and a permitting fee. Upon further reflection after the Economic Development Subcommittee, in terms of evaluating the level of the fee that would be appropriate, consistent with the spirit of trying to encourage vendors to come into compliance, we're recommending a nominal $25 fee, which would not be, obviously, cost recovery of staff time, but it would lower the barrier for folks who wanted to come into compliance, especially during this first phase of the program. So happy to answer any questions again, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Greg. Yep.
I was just going to recognize Sarah Jones and just from the county to provide just a couple of comments to kind of bookend staff's presentation.
Thank you for being here, Director Jones. Thank you, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My first time at city council in my hometown, so really glad to be here. My name's Sarah Jones. I'm the Director of the Community Development Agency for the county. And as Assistant City Manager Robinson Pinion mentioned, in, at the county level, community development includes the typical planning, building, housing functions. Also includes environmental health services, which covers all of our food permitting and... and looks out for this aspect of public health. And so we have been working in great partnership with staff from the city in addressing this issue of unpermitted vendors and the activity that has, that has really emerged to a pretty intense degree in San Rafael. We are coming to it from different, different areas of authority. Our authority at the county is about the California Retail Food Code and preventing foodborne illness and other hazards associated with food. And also as the permitting authority related to food businesses. And of course, as the city are coming to this from the standpoint of supporting community, protecting health and safety in the public right of way and just the day-to-day functioning of, of people in the community. But what we share is that commitment to healthy, I love the way that Mr. Minor put it, healthy, accessible, vibrant communities. And so that is what we're both bringing to it. Couple of aspects that I, I want to touch on a little bit from the county's perspective. One is that we are really looking at this from the issue of the permitting authority around food. There are many brick and mortar businesses that put a lot of time and effort into making sure they can get permitted, meet the food code. And we want to make sure that those, those requirements exist for a reason. And we want to make sure that, that the people of San Rafael are, are protected in what they eat and that those businesses are not being compromised by those who are not following those same regulations. That's really important. Mr. Minor mentioned a pilot on the code enforcement. From the perspective of the county, this is, this is a big area of this. We are committed to sharing in this enforcement and really need to look at how that can be supported and sustainable. Our food program is 100% fee-supported. And so we are really thinking about the equity for brick and mortar businesses in this context and, and the staff time that it's taking. And so just want to say really excited with this collaboration that we have around this. Support the moves that, that city staff is recommending here. We, we've worked on them together. We think this is going to be an effective and important path. It's setting a tone for a lot of the other cities and towns in Marin County who are interested in some of the same arrangements and collaborations. So well done.
Thank you, Director. Thank you for your collaboration. I'll turn to the council for questions. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Greg. A couple of questions on the fee. So I saw in the proposed table, there's a, there's a fee of 25 and then right below it is a permit for 25. So do you have to, can you walk me through the, the whole process from end to end? Would it be 50 total or what's the process for getting a permit?
Sure. So the first time you would apply, you would pay a $25 application fee. And then if your application is approved, you pay a $25 annual permit fee. And then every year, if you renew your permit, you would pay that another $25 permit fee. But it's within the city council's discretion if you did not want to adopt a fee or if you wanted staff to return with more information or provide more options in the future.
Well, I, I, yeah, and to your, to your point, there are many options. And I was looking at in figure one, it shows mobile vending permit fees ranging from zero to 25, all the way up to 412 to 497. Can you walk us through, you know, what, because I imagine there's a spectrum of benefits and consequences to going to, from zero to, to something pretty high.
Sure. So just for the general public's understanding, council members referring to a chart in the report where we provided examples of other jurisdictions and how much they charge for fees for mobile vending programs. As I mentioned previously, any fee is going to establish a barrier, you know, or just an additional, you know, box someone will have to check, but in, in actual, you know, amount of money that a vendor would have to come out and, and pay in order to come into compliance. Fees are obviously a reflection of staff time spent processing a permit. So the closer to cost recovery, usually the higher the fee is, the closer to, the city is to recovering the cost of staff time, but the higher the barrier potentially for the, the vendor, the operator. There are jurisdictions, as noted here in the chart, such as City Hayward, which has zero fees. City of Oakland, when they launched their mobile vending program, it was under the, it was during COVID, under the umbrella of their outdoor dining program, they initially had no fee. So potentially the city council could not adopt a fee. And, and when the annual master fee schedule update starts later, this fiscal year or the next fiscal year rather, we can impose a fully cost recovery fee as an incentive for folks to come into compliance in the first phase of the program. There are different options that council can adopt, obviously within the legal restrictions that we can't charge anything beyond what would be cost recovering.
Sure. And I think maybe more just to ask again, if you can help maybe walk us through it in looking at how fees are assessed in different cities and, and just in the chart for, just to narrate. Oakland shows in this chart that the highest range, which is $412 to $497. Can you, would you be able to characterize if you, if we were to consider a higher fee? Maybe this is just my own, I'm telling myself a story, that it might have the, the effect of maybe making it more limited potentially in the community. I am, I am concerned, I'll just say I'm leaving my question, for our local brick and mortar establishments, who I think to your characterization does create an uneven playing field. So I wonder if you could help characterize, you know, if we go, but I could also imagine maybe to your point, if you go too high, we could really make it impossible. Is that even legal around fee recovery?
I, I would offer that it's a little bit of apples and oranges because both the fees, we're discussing fees at the moment, but everyone's going to be responsible or is responsible if you operate a business for paying taxes, first off. And then secondly, both mobile vendors and brick and mortar food establishments would have to pay. I mean, I would defer to Director Jones, but I presume they have to obtain whatever health permitting, they have to obtain health permits and pay those fees. So what we're discussing right now is a city, an additional permit that only mobile vendors would have to pay in San Rafael.
Gotcha.
So it's kind of apples and oranges.
Totally. Okay, so that, that helps. And so maybe if I can, if you, if the council, the rest of my colleagues would indulge me, could you maybe walk me through maybe a counterfactual example? So let's say that there's someone who's not compliant as of this date, you know, we, we put this, if we were to put this ordinance into effect as recommended, could you walk me through an example of, you know, a process of, you know, that they come into the, the city offices here, say, I want to make an application, you know, can you walk me, maybe walk me through a counterfactual example?
Sure. Essentially what the process would be for someone to come into compliance. So they would just have to fill out an application, which would identify essentially what kind of vending, whether they be stationary or mobile, and then provide proof of a health permit with Marin County, proof of a business tax certificate and seller's permit to show that they're paying taxes. And then if, depending on what fee the city council adopts, they would have to pay the fee.
And then, then they are issued, I'm just going to continue it forward. So they're issued a, a card and then they have to be able to produce it if someone from enforcement comes to, to challenge them and say, hey, are, are you authorized to, to vend here?
Sure. The, the specifics, you know, type of card has not yet been produced, but they, they would receive a permit which they would be able to produce to, to government staff who are asking for proof of compliance, similar to how a, a food truck has a, a health permit, you know, on the truck as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to add the, Greg mentioned the health, the, the food permit piece of this, which they would have to demonstrate in order to get one of these permits. The, the permitting requirements for any kind of food business are set by the state. And so it is not necessarily that easy to get, to get one of those permits. They're, whether it's a mobile facility, brick and mortar, a cart, there's all the, the requirements around hand washing, around temperature control. They differ based on what the kind of food is that's being sold. But we, you know, we are recognizing that this can be a challenging thing to legalize just from the food permitting standpoint.
Thank you. One more question, which is you did reference this and maybe it's, if you could help me understand, because I, I heard that with SB nine seven two, our ability to say, oh, we like, you know, time, place and manner is very difficult to enforce. But what, what mechanisms or remedies do we have to say? Because here's what I'm trying to maybe get to. You know, we, when we have a series of very, we have brick and mortar entities or even, or even food trucks that go to a great amount of capital investment to, to get there. And, you know, I don't presume that every person who has a brick and mortar and, and a mobile food truck is, is saying, is, is happy about, about this. But I'm, I'm curious, what remedies do we have to be able to say you can vend? You can positively state where you can vend and, but maybe not over here.
Yeah. I'll try to summarize again, but, and then there's lots of, a lot more detail in the, the staff report. There's a summary as well, but I understand it's kind of confusing because on one side, it's, it's, it's as if cities aren't unable to regulate, but then there are opportunities to regulate. So there's kind of two categories of mobile vendors, one that, ones that are stationary, they vend from a fixed place, and then those that are roaming, which is push carts. So under SB nine four six roaming, cities are not allowed to restrict what zones roaming vendors can, can operate in, but we can establish time and manner restrictions. So you can't mend, you can't, you can't vend at midnight, for example, in residential districts. But we cannot prohibit them from vending in residential districts. They also, they can't block ADA access in a residential district. And we can establish, you know, you know, the public health requirements that they have a public health permit and also ensure that they're picking up the trash from their customers, for example. Stationary vendors, we can regulate which zones they can operate from. And the proposed ordinance prohibits stationary vending in residential zones, as well as the downtown precise plan. There are also buffers from like exits and entrances and bus stops and things where you could have too many people blocking the sidewalk. So those are some of the restrictions that are proposed. But again, so sorry, hopefully that answers.
I guess, is there a follow-up to what we might, the ordinance that we're contemplating this evening to be specific in defining positive places or negative places of where you can and cannot?
It's, yes, it's in the, it's in the, the ordinance does specify. And then because, thanks to the, the wisdom of my colleague to my right, we, we produced a summary because it can be difficult to track down. And it's actually hopefully going to help me in this moment so I can identify specifically what parts of the ordinance.
And while you're doing, actually, rather than going to that, maybe you can answer the follow-up question, which is how amendable is that? Would we have to do another council meeting to amend it? Or can staff make those potential amendments if we didn't get it right the first time?
It would have to be, we would have to amend the ordinance because it's fairly specific in terms of the distance, like we say X number of feet from a driveway. So in order to make modifications to those numbers or to add additional categories for which we're creating a buffer, we would need to, we would need to amend the ordinance. But what we, you know, that is a fair question. And perhaps in the FAQs, we can have some maps that kind of explain where stationary vending or mobile vending could be permitted under the ordinance to kind of clarify that for people who are interested in participating in the program or just community members that just want to know more.
Yeah, and I apologize because I did see the distances. I think I was more saying, we, we, we would not be able to say, like on this named street, we couldn't be that, the policy has to be very objective.
Correct. It has to be related to a health or safety condition. So again, as Assistant Director Greg Minor said about distances from ingress and egress, preventing the free movement related to persons with disabilities or things of that sort. Things that objectively can be determined to impact safety and again, as not relating to economic competition.
Thank you.
And just to circle back in terms of like where in the ordinance you can find those operating restrictions. So 10.50.100 outlines the, the restrictions that apply to all vendors, stationary and mobile. And then 10.50.110 specifies the operating restrictions for mobile vendors, or, excuse me, stationary vendors.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Yorin Gulati.
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you, Councilmember Hill, because I had a similar question about like guiding us of if somebody just wants to come in and, and do the permits. So if, so this is great. First of all, thank you so much because our community came to us that this was an issue happening. So thank you so much for, for bringing this to our attention. How do we know that this is going to be working? Do we have like, because we were talking about like how easy it would be to amend it if we have to make changes, but are we going to be looking at this like after one year evaluating? Or how, how are we internally going to be looking at this?
We would certainly look at the data related to enforcement to see if the number of complaints were increasing, decreasing, perhaps the location where enforcement occurs. So we would use the data, much like we track the hotspots that's provided in the staff report as one of the, the maps and attachments. We would look at that data over time to see how trends were moving in a positive or a negative direction.
Okay, great. And I assume that to report that again is a see it, click it, fix it for the community?
It's currently not under see, click, fix. It's, we currently do it as a code enforcement item, but that's something that we can, as we look into our, our constituent relationship system, one of the things that we're going to be looking over, I can't remember if it's in year two or year, and we're going to be talking about that when we talk about the strategic work plan, is updates to our see, click, fix system, perhaps procuring another system around constituent relationship management. But right now it goes to code enforcement, not through see, click, fix.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Also, I wanted to recognize, thank you so much to the county for being here. In your presentation, you mentioned that 25% of the vendors right now, they are from San Rafael and 75% are coming from outside. And I have heard that they are coming from Oakland and Richmond because on those cities, they get rid of everything and they basically don't want to do it there. And I guess people are also shopping here. So I guess my question is around enforcement. And you are talking about like from the city dedicated like a budget towards this program, which I think is so important. I was just curious to see from the county, what is your plan in terms of like enforcement? And because I think that's what's going to be needed in order to make a change.
Yes, absolutely. Enforcement is going to be really important. We're not operating under the, we're not operating with an idea that the issue is going to go away once it can be legalized. So those are conversations that we are having with our Board of Supervisors to make sure that we can adequately staff our food program for effective enforcement. And with, with these new mechanisms in place that you're considering tonight, our staff will then readjust our strategies as, as they've been doing throughout this around the enforcement on it. One thing that I, I did not, that I neglected to mention sooner, because I know this issue of supporting local entrepreneurs is really important, is that one of the, one of the changes in our permitting that the county is considering is permits allowing people to operate micro enterprise home kitchen operations, MECOs. And what those would do, among other things, is it, it means that you can use your, your own home kitchen as a commercial kitchen for limited, for sort of a limited scale of a business. And so you could, somebody could use their home kitchen as a commissary for a mobile food operation instead of having to go and pay for another commissary. So that by nature, if the board approves that permit, it would sort of be an incentive or a or a facilitating path for local vendors that would pair with this ordinance in supporting the ability for, for legalized activity.
No, that would be, I think, a game changer. So that would be great. And again, thank you for the coordination. I know that one of the challenges, especially with enforcement, is that the activity is happening in the evenings, sometimes it's happening on the weekends. So it's to be able to have staff available, I guess, to the enforcement.
Yes, both of our staffs have logged a lot of overtime hours. And we do, we do want to make sure that we can find a way to sustain the enforcement that's needed.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I just, thank you for the report. I mean, we did receive a lot of community comments, so it's great to see that this is coming forward, actually in city time, very quickly. So thank you. I have a question in terms of the, I just want to call them like the casual food stands, the occasional bake sale, the occasional papuza tamale sale. I'm looking at Voices of Canal. How do those, those are totally separate? Or do they fall into this category?
There's an exemption from the requirement to obtain a mobile vending permit in this ordinance for those, for vending that takes place under the umbrella of a special event. So if it was part of a special event permit, it would not need a permit from this chapter. And that's, that's just with respect to city permits. I'm not sure specifically with health permitting requirements. But for the occasional vendor, they wouldn't have to get this permit. They could be included under a special event permit.
Sure.
I, we're not worried about bake sales, I can say that. It is, it is something that is covered under, it is what is termed non-hazardous food versus potentially hazardous food, which is an interesting way to characterize all these things that we enjoy. But, you know, when, when there's not an issue of temperature, it is, you know, that, that is kind of in our focus in enforcement. We are really focused on the hazardous food kinds of issues. So a papuza or tamale sale is not something that we're going to go seeking. But there is a health-related concern about foods that are being held at problematic temperatures, especially for a long period of time. So it's something to consider within the context of that special event permit. And the, and we have our own permitting structures for that as well. But also, the, the program is complaint-based. And so we are, in doing this enforcement, we are responding to complaints. They need to be, at this point in time, it needs to actually be complaints from the city rather than from individuals because of the staffing and the need for the code enforcement partnership that comes in with, with doing these activities. So I, I think the, the bake sales are safe.
Thank you. Let me just follow up before you step away. Let me just, because you just triggered something for me, the, the process. So community member, something's happening late at night in, in a neighborhood. Community member sends the city or calls the police, or I'm not sure. So just trying to figure out what that scenario, because it's late at night, no one's in the city at that point, would call the police. Police would then, if we'd, do what? And then would it actually be enacted on when?
I can't speak for, for how the police respond to something that comes in, in off-hours or in the moment. And that, that would be something for, for your staff to fill in on. But as the, as the process is working now, we are, we have kind of moved to a point where we know the activity is occurring, there's ongoing collaboration and sort of strategic planning around taking enforcement action. And so, so there will, they will designate at night to go out because it really does need to be at night. So there's a lot of special planning that's needed. So, you know, there, there are certain patterns that have been occurring over time. And so, so the, so sort of the, the way that the enforcement activity is handled has evolved a little bit, you know, and is always involving that partnership and that pre-planning. And I don't know how the city is responding to sort of the immediate, the immediate response to complaints or situations. In some cases, though, the, the vendor operation will be particularly, you know, there, there's something going on that is, could be a particular immediate health and safety hazard, not that you'll have a foodborne illness, but really a hazard to those around it. And is that something?
I would definitely say that. I would say that in, in the staff report where we summarized enforcement, there was individual enforcement done by the San Rafael Police Department. But I think it's not just for the presence of food. There have been complaints about noise, people arguing, or things of that nature. So again, I wouldn't say that PD would not respond, but it tends, but it depends upon the combination of circumstances. So to, if someone's selling papuzas at 10 o'clock at night, that's not going to necessarily engender a SRPD response. However, if someone's selling papuzas and there's people fighting and there's loud noise, then that may rise to that. But to Director Jones's point, it really does require a high level of coordination because in many instances, there may be issues that are, that are occurring alongside with the vending. In some cases, they're not. And we're really just looking at the health and the safety concern around the food and the, the food handling and the temperatures and things of that sort. So I just want to answer the question. There are some circumstances where it is appropriate, and there are some circumstances where the coordinated enforcement needs to happen because it hasn't risen to that level of, of, of need or concern such that a PD response, police department response, would be required.
And then part of, part of the reason that we got to a place where there is always that partnership with code enforcement or with San Rafael PD is because of incidents with, that occurred against environmental health staff in doing the enforcement. They were verbally assaulted, they were physically assaulted, and so we needed to set up a different arrangement.
Okay. Don't stay for a second. Another question around, so you had mentioned that the other jurisdictions are also looking at potentially updating their ordinances as well, and also the counties. So for unincorporated, do you see that there's going to be alignment county-wide on how we're doing this?
Potentially. So the, so the immediate area of interest for the other jurisdictions is around the, the enforcement, sort of setting up a more formalized partnership on the enforcement. We have been most active, in addition to San Rafael, this issue has been most, has sort of had the most activity in Nevada, at Vista Point, over by the bridge. And, and in some of the unincorporated portions of the county, I think anybody who's been by the Painted Bridge has, has seen that vendor who is pretty persistent out there. So in all of those situations, you know, having sort of real certainty around what the enforcement arrangement would be makes a lot of sense. And I, and I think that they were very interested in what the county and San Rafael are developing on that front. I don't know if, I'm not aware of other places that are seeking to take the further step of finding a path to legalization and management of the activity. And so that is something that I, I think there will be a lot of eyes on San Rafael here in Marin County on how that works. But in the unincorporated areas, it is something that as we think through the MECO ordinance and what that is, what that is seeking, might be something that we want to bring into a future work program, or think about how to manage the situation that emerges every year at the county fair, or some of those conditions.
Which I think segues into the next question, which is the food park concept. Is that what sort of what you were referring to, as something more formalized? And I was wondering, you had mentioned Santa Rosa has that. Is that managed directly through Santa Rosa? Or is there a third-party vendor that does that?
Our understanding is a third-party vendor took advantage of a available property that was, I guess, in the transition, and later on became developed, and they had to find another location. But that was through a, a third-party vendor that kind of took ownership, as, as far as I understand, I don't know if Director Jones knows more, the Matote Park Marketplace, I believe, is what it's referred to. And it was an, an event organizer who took responsibility for, for the marketplace.
And those were all permitted vendors going through that process? Okay. But it had a single location? Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Thank you. I have some questions. First of all, though, I want to say 100% support all of the permitting and bringing them into the fold of your regulation program, the county's, as well as the city. So setting those aside and turning our attention to enforcement, I couldn't help but notice in your presentation that one of the photos was of the establishment that has been there for quite some time in front of the post office. I was wondering, could you put that photo back up? And while you're doing that, let's collect our thoughts because my, my question is, compare and contrast what you'll be able to do after this is adopted versus what we're doing now? And most importantly, give me a timeline for when enforcement actions are anticipated for that particular site. I have been noticing that site for quite some time because it is very prominent. The, if, as the photo shows, there are at least four different propane tanks. There's nothing that looks like a handwashing station or any sort of garbage collection. But so what I would like to hear from you is what changes will be, or what new tools, what new rights, what new avenues will be available to you after we take these steps? And when, when do we think we can take some action in the real world on this particular site as an example?
Sure, I can try to respond. So for what it's worth, this is actually not a picture in front of the post office in Salem. I believe it's 240 Canal Street. You can kind of see the address on the left side.
It looks like it.
But it's very similar. It's basically a temporary food facility that's unpermitted. So as I was sort of mentioning earlier, because of SB 946, it's no longer a crime to, to vend without a, a permit. So cities can issue a citation. You can kind of see one of our, our code enforcement supervisor writing in a piece of paper here.
You can see the photo. We actually can't see the photo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, is there a way?
We're going to keep describing it. I just wanted you to know that we couldn't see.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a way that can be displayed?
It's loading. Give it here.
Thank you. That's the one that, I, I thought that was, yeah, that, you knew your right. See the fence back there?
Take two. Okay. So, so with respect to enforcement, at present, we can issue a citation, a fine that's limited to, I think, $100 at first. And then with the, the authority of Marin County Environmental Health, seize the food. What we've been proposing as part of the, the MOU is to partner on seizing the equipment if needed in addition to that. And that would effectively stop a vendor from operating until they're able to, they had equipment in place.
Okay.
And then in terms of timing, I think conservatively, I would say spring of next year. But hopefully we can establish all the, all of the protocols and things well in advance. But I'm just trying to manage expectations a little to make sure that we have everything in place beforehand.
So are you telling me I should expect to see that site out there for the next six months?
No, and I would hope not. But just in terms of getting all of our tools in place, I think, real confidently, I would say spring of next year, but hopefully well before that because we've already been in discussions in terms of ensuring all the protocols when it comes to seizing someone else's property and, and being able to restore it and complying with the different state and federal laws that relate to people's property.
And Director, is there anything that you need from us that could accelerate this process? Because this has been going on, notwithstanding my bad photo identification, for quite some time.
Yes, it has. And I, I will take that question back and get a more specific answer. I would say that, you know, the, the, the ability to seize the equipment is, is instrumental for sure because these, you know, we've gotten some insights from the vendors themselves. And, you know, the, this is a very large operation that's happening, and so the equipment is kind of a key piece of it. And so there, there's just the logistics of the timing. It's, it's, it's getting the logistics in place for actually physically seizing the equipment, putting it somewhere, keeping it somewhere, all of those processes, which is going to be, you know, further work between the county and the city. I will say that, you know, we are all in on this. And so if there are challenges on where it goes or what to do with it, you know, we'll, San Rafael's not on its own in finding that. So in that way, we would, we would be able to help speed the time. But I will also get anything further on pieces that might be needed that the county can offer, and we'll report that back through Assistant City Manager Robinson Pinon.
Absolutely. Let us know what you need, and we will do everything in our powers to get it to you immediately because this has been in our community for far too long. And waiting until spring is not really a timeline that we're comfortable with. So tell us what you need, and we will put our thinking caps on and find a way to make it happen.
Thank you.
If, if I may, Councilmember Bushy, just to, the complication of the site at the post office is that they're on federal property.
But you've solved that. You've solved that with that, with the ordinance.
Well, we have to coordinate. So enforcement has to be done with, in consultation with the support of the postmaster. It's not just exclusively the city.
No. You've adopted a rule that says that they, the vendor, must produce a written, express written permission from the landowner. Now it's on them to produce it. I thought that's why you put that in there. Section 15. Yeah, it's in there. I thought that's what that was for. It's a great thing. I, I.
Enforcement against the federal government presents some interesting challenges. And so.
No, I'm not asking you to enforce against the post office. It's against the vendor who's trespassing at the post office.
Well, go ahead, please be my guest.
Okay. So I think you're all right. Okay. So, so when it comes to, yeah. So when it comes to the, the ordinance and the tools, this is providing us more tools that we've been discussing. A, it establishes a requirement, you have to get a permit. It's going to require that, it provides us an opportunity to seize the equipment once we've established all those protocols. But to Assistant City Manager Robinson Pinon's point, the fact that it's on federal property makes it a little tricky. If we, unlike if it was on private property, for example, where we could put pressure on a private property owner who might be more responsive, it could be more challenging with that respect. But I completely agree with the points that you're raising in terms of, we are providing more tools in our toolkit to address that.
We are giving you section 1050.100, subsection E15. Subsection E15. In order to have a permit, they must have, the alphabet says, received express written consent of the property owner or lessee of the property. If they don't have that, they can't get a permit and boom, bring in your trucks and haul this stuff away. Get it done tonight.
Councilmember Bushy, I'm going to call on our captain in the audience to come and respond to a question. My understanding and part of the complication is that in the enforcement activity, that the police would require a trespassing complaint in order for the police to take action. I hope you can answer.
And I hope you can answer that question, Captain Leon.
Yes, and so when it comes to property that owned either privately or federal property, we do, we cannot go and enforce those laws unless we get permission from the property owners. Just like our trespass, just like City Manager Christina Lilovich just said, we can't, if we have somebody that's trespassing on private property, we can't go out there and remove them from that property unless we get permission from the property owner. As far as the post office, it would be the same thing. We'd have to work with federal government in order to give us permission to go out and enforce laws on their property.
So that supersedes Section 15, so Section 15 is meaningless? Well, okay, we hit arguments, so we understand that...
It's not meaningless, it's a condition in order to receive the permit. So it's part of the process that the city uses to evaluate whether or not someone has met its standards for a permit. And also to the extent where it's public property, right, what they said that it's our property, we can say, without going through too much rigmarole, that the city has not given you authorization to conduct your vending business on its property. So there, it does have value, but to your, I understand your frustration with the post office and I know the code enforcement has been trying to make contact with the postmaster general in order to get some traction in terms of doing more enforcement in the area and will continue to try to make inroads in that area. But it does have merit in terms of conditions for approving a permit.
All right, well, let's not that.
Any more questions?
Stop us, I know.
Okay, I have three questions, building on the myriad of questions you've already heard. So we talked about Nevada, I understand is farther along in the process, their fee is higher. I'm curious if there are any learnings from what they've done that we're applying here, like that fee, much, much higher than the $25, I think it was 300, I've moved now off that page. So I'm just, I'm curious if, when we talk to them, if that did discourage, if that...
I can't speak specifically to Nevada and lessons that we learned from them. I don't know if Director Jones has any insights from Nevada. Don't want to make you, put you on the, sorry for putting you on the spot again, but...
Well, just because they're the other major city here that I know has had a similar concern. Nevada, you know, our ongoing engagement with Nevada has been on the enforcement side with Nevada Police Department. On the permitting, I am not aware that people have gotten far enough to be discouraged by, I meant by a $300 fee, because it is really, it is not easy to get a permit to meet the California Retail Food Code requirements for this. Many of the operations that we see happening and that we enforce on, even when it's legalized, it's going to be extremely difficult for them to be able to get a permit because of not having all of the other things that they need. And so I'm not sure, whatever the permit fee is, that it is going to be the most significant barrier. No, that's helpful, and I'm sure Nevada's fee was cost recovery, that's probably why it's so high. Okay, that's really helpful, thank you, Director Jones. So there's been a lot of conversations and questions about impoundment and violations, and I read in the ordinance, there's an escalation of the fees for the violations. So if you could just speak to that, because that hasn't come up and I think that's important for the community to know. And then, of course, how does the impoundment, when does that happen in the escalation of the fee or the violations? So right now it's like 200 bucks or 250, it just keeps going up. But do you have to violate three times and then you're impounded, like?
So in terms of the fines, that for the penalties, that's actually prescribed by SB 946.
Okay.
The escalating structure and the amount, so I think it's $100 for the first violation, 200 for a second violation, 500 for subsequent violations. Impounding procedures we have to be, are to be determined. That's part of what we need to resolve before we implement our, the impoundment processes for the equipment. But the intent is to address vendors who are not deterred by fines or the seizure of food, so repeat offenders.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And then the last, just to clarify, because there's been conversation on the dais about the times that people are selling, but what I read several times in the ordinance, it's allowed 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's, is that correct for both the mobile and the roaming? Just so the council knows, that's what I read.
Correct.
We don't have that now, so now you can be out there at 10 o'clock at night, so that's going to change. Okay, I just want to make sure, okay. Thank you, there might be more questions, so don't go away. Well, I'll take public comment, but thank you, Director. Great. So we will open up the public comment on this item. Oh, do you have one more? Okay, one more question from Councilmember Hill, and then we'll open up.
Thank you, Mary Kate, for indulging, one more question and my colleagues for indulging me as well. The distances that were, that are in that section, are those ones that we tooled for our community or were they modeled even if they were told slightly from another community?
Those were modeled for our community. Other jurisdictions that have sidewalk lending ordinances have similar buffers, but they were designed for Samarfell.
Thank you.
Thank you, I know we're going to toggle the interpreter, is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Just it, thank you.
Oh, we're done on that?
Yes.
Okay, so I will open up the public comment on this item. If you would like to add your thoughts or have any questions, now is your opportunity. And as always, you're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of Samarfell you live in. Okay, welcome.
Hello, my name is Diana Venites, I'm the Senior Community Development Planner at Canal Alliance. And thank you to staff for working on this. I know it's a lot of hard work and I also just want to acknowledge that I helped steward Nuestro Canal, Nuestro Futuro, our Canal, our Future. And that's a resident-led vision planning process guided by our Consejo, our Resident Advisory Council. And so I wanted to speak a little bit to what we've been hearing through our engagement. We've had about three community fairs now and a few workshops and we've spoken with like more than 700 folks. And so I just want to acknowledge that street vending is part of the canal's cultural and economic fabric. It reflects the creativity, entrepreneurship and community pride of our Latino immigrant neighborhood. And families value the variety of foods and the sense of connection that vending brings to daily life. Through our engagement, we've identified cultural preservation and economic development as key priorities in the community. And what we've heard is that folks want safer, more accessible spaces for vending with dedicated zones and making sure that vendors don't take over the whole sidewalk. Because we've heard from a lot of folks that they then have to walk on the street and that can be dangerous. We've also heard that they want to see accessible processes for vendors to get licensed because as Greg spoke, like folks get fined and fined, but the process can be very difficult and they don't even know the whole process. And so just getting that support and then making sure that the food that is served is safe. We've heard stories of folks getting food poisoning and just wanting to make sure that the process, that the food is made safely. And just overall, more opportunities for local entrepreneurs. And so we heard from folks that they wanted opportunities for both those mobile and stationary vendors, but also the brick and mortar vendors. Because in the canal neighborhood, we have a lot of entrepreneurs. And I just also want to acknowledge that Canal Alliance, we have some programs on entrepreneurs of color and Construyendo Mi Negocio, like constructing my business programs. And we help small business owners formalize, have access to startup capital and grow sustainably. And we are totally open to joining that pilot. I know one of my colleagues, Francesca, from that team is here and so she may speak. And so as the city updates this ordinance, we encourage an approach that protects public safety while celebrating and supporting the small businesses that make the canal vibrant because street vending isn't just commerce, it's culture, livelihood and community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on this item?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Francesca Santana, soy supervisora del programa de negocios de Canal Alliance. Solo quiero agregar algunas cosas a lo que dijo mi compañera Diana, y es que estamos a favor de que se regularice todo lo que es vender comida. Estamos hablando del lugar, la seguridad de todos al caminar por las calles y que no estemos con los negocios en la ser, eso es muy importante. El manejo de los residuos de la comida, de cómo manejan la basura porque esto va a hacer que nuestra comunidad permanezca limpia y libre de ratas, de contaminación y todo eso. También estamos a favor de que tenga manejo de la comida, con relación a la temperatura, la higiene y todo, porque todos somos parte de la comunidad y todos consumimos esta comida. Entonces, lo que quiero para mí, lo quiero para los demás. Lo que queremos es que nuestra comunidad pueda tener mayor acceso a los cursos, a los talleres, a los exámenes que ellos tienen que tomar en español. Por qué? Porque para algunos de ellos llenar un formulario es un poco complicado porque tienen la barrera del idioma. También conocer las reglas, porque el ignorar las reglas y los procedimientos nos llevan a cometer errores. Y por eso quizás algunos no están acorde con lo que pide la ciudad. Nuestro programa de negocios en canal comprende diferentes tipos de negocios. Está la persona que tiene un negocio ya establecido, pero también está la señora que vende los tamales, la que vende las pupusas. Entonces, de allí estas personas obtienen el ingreso de su familia y queremos también que se puedan incluir ellos. Sabemos que quizás puede ser un reto poder incluir dentro de los permisos este tipo de negocios, pero es lo único que queremos para poder ayudar a la comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good night.
We're going down there.
Sorry, I'm going to have the interpretation now. Good night, my name is Francesca and I'm part of the program of negotiation with Canal Alliance. And I would like to say that we agree with all the implementation of rules for food. We agree that there needs to be safety, we agree that we cannot block the sidewalks and also we agree that we need to handle all the waste and the trash because we want to keep our city clean. And also we don't want, you know, we don't want rats or other things that could do a contamination to our city. And also, we agree that the hygiene and the management of the food is very important because we all, we all consume that food. So whatever is important to the rest of the community, it's important to me as well. What we would like to request is for people to have more access to courses or, yeah, to courses and that they're in Spanish. Because as you can, as you can say, just filing an application could be very complicated, especially when it's not your language. And also, we would like for people to know the rules and that, because they want to be in accordance to the city rules. And then in the canal, we have three types of businesses. The businesses that they have been established, but we also have businesses that they just sell tamales and pupusas. And the people that sell tamales and pupusas, that's their only income to support their family. So I would like to also request if we can include these small businesses also within the permits, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Felix Perez, soy voluntario de Vozes del Canal. Yo estoy aquí porque la verdad pues no estoy de acuerdo con las ventas en las calles del canal, porque hacen tráfico y la comida pues la venden más cara que los negocios que están pagando impuestos y aparte pues están pagando electricidad, agua, todos, todo eso, ¿verdad? O sea, no pagan permiso tampoco, ¿verdad? Tuve una, le voy a contar una experiencia que tuve hace poco. Ahí en frente de mi rancho había una persona que estaba vendiendo atole, o sea, todo lo que se trata de comida, ¿verdad? Y vine yo y dije voy a ir a comprar ahí que estar más barato que acá en mi rancho. Y pedí un atole y resulta que estaba más caro, un dólar, que mi rancho. Y pues la verdad pues, aparte pues interrumpe en el tráfico. Y mi pregunta es, qué va a ser la ciudad, qué puede hacer la ciudad para que ayudar a esas personas que saquen su permiso? En un lugar donde no obstruyan las banquetas y obstruyen el tráfico. Esto, muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Felix Perez and I'm a volunteer for Vozes del Canal. And I want to say that I do not agree with the mobile sales in the canal because they create a lot of traffic. And then also, sometimes their food is more expensive than the brick and mortar businesses. Those businesses, they also pay taxes, they have to pay for electricity, they have to pay for water and these other vendors, they don't even pay for a permit to be selling food. And then I want to tell you an experience that, I want to tell you a story about an experience that I had very recently. I normally buy in mi rancho atole, which is a beverage. And then, so I always buy in mi rancho and then I said, you know what, I'm going to buy it from one of the street vendors. And it was actually more expensive, it was $1 more expensive than mi rancho. So, I mean, they interrupt traffic. So my question to the city is, how are you going to help these people to obtain this permit so they stop obstructing the sidewalks?
Thank you. Yeah, welcome.
Hola, buenas noches. Ah, mi nombre es Osiris. He sido voluntaria en las escuelas acá de San Rafael, muchos me conocen. Igual hago este comida para algunos eventos, aparte que pago el espacio, pago aseguranza porque es importante el tener aseguranza como el permiso. Yo pienso que sí estaríamos a favor de que aprueben un permiso en cuanto a licencia porque habemos muchos que somos madres solteras, la renta está super alta. Entonces, entonces, nos ayudaría mucho siempre y cuando tengamos todo limpio. Chequeo de salubridad le llaman, entonces estaría perfecto para muchos de nosotros como latinos.
Thank you.
Good night, my name is Osiris and I am a volunteer in different schools in Samarfell and there's a lot of people that know me. And I make food for events, I have to pay for the space, I also have to pay for insurance because I think it's very important to pay insurance. So I'm in favor for you to approve this permit. A lot of us, we are single mothers and the rent is very high. So this will help us. And then I agree that we have to have everything clean and then we have to have, to be checked by the Health Commission. But as Latin women, this is an important, an important business.
Welcome.
Mi nombre es Angelica.
Um, mi nombre es Angelica. Ah, ah, yo pido a ustedes que nos ayuden para tener una licencia para vender comida. Porque hay muchas mamás que no tiene trabajo y tiene familia y no, no pueden mantener bien a sus familias. Mejor que nosotros tenemos un negocio para que usted nos ayuden. Así como dijo nuestro compañero que hay uno vende más caro, vende más barato, pero no es la que... Lo que decimos pues, lo que decimos que usted nos ayuda para sacar una licencia, para que sabemos hacer un negocio, para mantener a nuestra familia, para que usted nos ayuden, para que tener un trabajos para nuestro cuento pues. Que nos ayude para sacar una licencia y que a usted nos ayudan las mamás que no tiene trabajo, tiene familia, tiene hijo, para que no dejan sus hijos con gente, unos, una mamá que está con sus hijos, para que no le falta nada, no le faltan dinero pues. Y que nos ayude para sacar una licencia, esa es la que queremos decir. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. My name is Angelica and I would like your help to obtain a license so we can sell food. A lot of us were single mothers and we don't have a job. And then we need to support our families and this is a good business. As my colleague said, sometimes they sell more expensive, but sometimes they sell less expensive. So again, if you can help us to obtain a license so we can continue to support our families. Because as you know, people have kids and then there's, there's a lack of money. So if you can help us to obtain a license, that will, that will help us a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hola, buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Cris Parra, vengo representando a la comunidad del Canal. Y nada más quiero también como a preguntarle a Greg si han considerado permisos especiales. Nuestra comunidad somos muy unidos y a veces cuando las personas tienen desafíos económicos, muerte de algún familiar, enfermedades o cualquier cosa, nosotros nos organizamos en la comunidad. Le gusta organizarse con lo mejor que sabemos hacer y es la comida. Y vender a veces cosas o a vender comida para poder apoyar a otras personas. Pienso que puede haber una manera de cómo dar unos permisos especiales para ese tipo de eventos. Eh, otra de las cosas es apoyar realmente a los negocios, a que, a educarlos, a que les, sea, tengan acceso más rápido a, a los permisos en español, al proceso en español. Porque no queremos perder nuestra cultura. Muchas de las cosas que venden en las calles son a veces comidas típicas de nuestros países. Muchas personas no tienen acceso a una comida, a una, a una cocina y es la única manera de no perder nuestras raíces, nuestros accesos. A muchas personas, también considerar un poquito más largo el tiempo porque muchas personas a las cinco o seis de la mañana se están yendo a trabajar y es donde pasan a agarrar su comida en los lugares. A veces llegan a las tarde, después de las seis de las tarde, a las ocho, nueve apenas están comprando comida para, para cenar. Entonces, ampliar un poquito ese horario y absolutamente apoyarlos porque también queremos apoyar a los negocios locales, a que ellos también, hay muchos hispanos que han hecho sus negocios y que han tenido ahorita, este, pues muchos problemas porque hay muchas personas que han venido de fuera a poner negocios aquí. Ya lo vieron en las gráficas, es más, son setenta y cinco por ciento foráneos los que viven a este lugar a vender. Entonces, apoyarnos en eso entre nosotros mismos, apoyar a los negocios locales y apoyar a los que apenas están surgiendo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night, everybody. My name is Cris Parra. I am with the Canal Community and I have a question for Greg about getting special permits for our businesses. We are, we're a very close-knit community and we always help people that are going through hard times. For example, if they're sick, if someone has died in the family. We always organize ourselves to provide food and to sell the food. So I would like to ask for some special help to get the special permits for certain events. And also, I would like your help to educate all the community on how they can get access to this permit and also how they can, they can go through the whole process. But I would like to, for, for, for it to be in Spanish. And also, we don't want to lose our culture, our roots. A lot of the food that we prepare is like authentic food from our countries. And then people, it's the only way that they have access to this type of food. Because some of them, they don't, they don't have a kitchen. And also, I would like to request if you can expand the time, the time when businesses are open. Because as you know, there's a lot of workers that start working at 5:00 AM, at 6:00 AM, or they come back from work at 6:00 PM, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM. So if you can extend that schedule so you can support the local, the local businesses. And, and then, we as Hispanics, we would like to support each other within our community. As you have shown in that graphic, about seventy-five percent of the people that are selling are outside of our community. So we want to keep supporting each other and keep supporting the local businesses.
Welcome, we're ready.
Buenas tardes o buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Aurelia Vargas, soy parte del consejo de nuestro canal, nuestro futuro. También soy líder de Voces de Canal y el motivo por el que estoy aquí es porque vengo a hablar sobre los puestos ambulantes. Yo vivo en Canal, vivo en la calle Elaine. Todos los días paso por la Canal Street y la Kerner. Y la gran mayoría de días es un problema con el tráfico, por carros mal estacionados en doble línea. Todos los días es un gran problema con la basura que dejan los puestos ambulantes. Entiendo la necesidad de mi comunidad, pero creo que debemos de seguir las reglas que se nos presentan. Aplicar para un proceso de permiso de comida. Entiendo que es difícil y por eso vengo a pedir que sea un poquito más accesible para que ellos puedan solicitarlo, poder aplicar. Mucha de nuestra comunidad no habla bien el español. Es muy difícil que ellos puedan atender a ese tipo de aplicaciones. Entonces, les pido que sean más considerados en ese trámite. También apoyo a los negocios locales porque ellos están padeciendo mucho de bajos ingresos por tener los puestos en nuestra comunidad. Pero a mí no me gusta pasar todos los días en las calles y ver tanto puesto porque ya no se ve una zona de apartamentos de familias. Ya se ve una market con muchos puestos de diferentes ventas y eso está ocasionando pérdidas a nuestros negocios locales que es enriquecido de diversas culturas, diversas comidas. Igual que los puestos ambulantes, pero pienso que todo tiene un proceso. Y sí, como lo mencionaron antes, hay puestos que se quedan más de las doce de la noche y ese es un problema. De ruido, de carros transitando en doble línea y es un gran problema en mi comunidad de Canal. So, les pido su apoyo. Un espacio digno para esas personas que quieren tener su negocio. Un espacio donde tengan agua, donde tengan baños. Ah, es importante el agua porque no hay donde lavarse las manos en las calles y pienso que eso puede traer una enfermedad. Los tanques de gas, ya tuvimos un incidente con un incendio. No queremos ver más incidentes de apartamentos quemándose por un incidente de tanques de gasolina y tanques de gas ahí en nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. My name is Aurelia Vargas. I'm part of the Council of Canal and also from, from Voces del Canal. I live in Canal, I live in Canal Street. I walk every day Canal Street and Kerner. And then there's always traffic problems. There's always cars parking illegally. And then there's a lot of trash. I understand the necessity of the people, but I also think that they need to follow the rules. They need to apply for permits for, to sell food. And also, they need to have an accessible, an accessible way to fill out this application. As you know, there's a lot of people that they don't speak good English. And then I would like for you to consider the whole process. And I also support the local businesses. And I know that they have suffered lately because of all the people that are selling in the streets. And then, you know, it's like there's so many vendors in the street that it doesn't look like, like a neighborhood with apartments and where family, where family live. It also looks like a, like a street market. And, and then, yeah, I mean, the local businesses are losing money. And then it's also because of these street vendors. And also, I've seen that they're selling, they're out there selling at midnight and there's a lot of noise. There's a lot of cars that are not parked, that are parked illegally. And I would like to ask your help so you can give them a dignified place where they could have water, where they could have restrooms. It's so important to have water because they don't have a place to wash their hands. And also, the problems with the gas tanks. There was, there was a fire, there was a fire in one of the apartments. So I also don't want to see any more instances of fires of apartments that are being burned because of this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Daniel Duarte. Este, yo soy, vengo de parte de mi restaurante. Pues la queja que tengo yo es que desde que pusieron estos negocios ambulantes, mi negocio se ha venido para abajo, no solo mío, pienso que muchos. No estoy en contra de que hayan nuevas oportunidades, lo que quiero que tengamos iguales los tagos. Pues si ellos van a pagar menos por los permisos también que nosotros que tenemos tiempo nos bajen eso. Y luego, este, que ellos tengan alejados de nuestros negocios, que no estemos todos juntos para que podamos tener una competencia sana y podamos permanecer todos porque yo ya tuve que recortar personal y no quiero llegar al sistema de cerrar porque no, las ventas han bajado. Y es cierto, la competencia es buena, pero que sea justa para todos y con permisos para que podamos persistir en esta lucha. Y como dijo la compañera, ya en las calles ya no se pueden caminar porque están tapando las aceras y es un problema para todos. Entonces, con los tampos de gas, eh, los ruidos, los cilindros, los ponen cerquita, uno, dos, tres cilindros explota, uno van a explotar los tres. Pienso que va a ser un daño que nos va a causar a todos y no queremos tener ese problema más adelante. Y si ustedes dan ese permiso, que va a permitir que ellos no puedan vender cervezas también ya que todo está permitido. Entonces, que pongan unas regulaciones que nos controlen a todos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. My name is Daniel Duarte. I have my own restaurant. And I would like to, to complain about these street vendors because since they started selling in the streets, my, my sales have gone down. And not only my restaurant, other restaurants as well. I mean, I'm not opposed to opportunities, but I agree that they need permits. And then you're saying that the permits, the permits that they're gonna get, they're less expensive of what we pay. So I don't think it's fair that they will pay less than what I am paying. And also, I would like for them to be apart from, from my business. We cannot have all the businesses together or so close to each other. I have, now I have to, I have to cut some of my staff because of the lack of sales and I don't want to close my restaurants. And I agree that competition is good, but it has to be, there has to be equality with permits. And as the, as my colleague was saying, the streets, you can't walk on the streets anymore. They're blocking the sidewalks. It's a problem for everybody. And then because of the gas tanks, because of the noise. Like I've seen three gas, gas tanks like right next to each other. Like if one will explode, like the three of them will, I mean, the two older of them will explode immediately. So, and then also, like be very careful about the regulation because if you start giving permits, then they're, they're gonna be like, well, now I can sell, I can sell beer. So, so I just want to have equality for everybody.
Thank you. Welcome.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Marta García y estoy aquí para exponer mi queja porque también yo soy una dueña de un negocio y también he tenido mucha pérdida por lo mismo. Yo no estoy en contra de que haya competencia, ¿verdad? Todos tenemos derecho, pero la verdad que nos ha afectado demasiado a nosotros los comerciantes que estamos fijos pagando nuestros impuestos, pagando renta, pagando luz, pagando empleados, entonces no es justo. No es justo por lo que estamos pasando nosotros ahorita porque también igual yo he tenido que cortar empleados porque no... Ahorita mi negocio está solo a esta hora porque todos los negocios que están en la calle pues hay muchos en la calle y es una, una, algo desigual, ¿verdad? Que pues nos está afectando a nosotros los pequeños comerciantes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, good night, everybody. My name is Marta García and I also have complained because I have my own business and I am, I'm seeing losses. I am not against a fair competition, but these street vendors are affecting, are affecting us way too much. Affecting us because we pay taxes, we pay rent, we pay for electricity and it's just not fair. I also have to fire some of my staff. And like right now, my business is completely empty. Because, why? Because of all the other street vendors that are on the streets right now. So I just, I just feel like things are not equal and it's affecting my business. Thank you.
Welcome.
Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Efren Aguila. Yo soy, vivo en la, en la comunidad del área del Canal por veinticinco años. Ah, siempre hasta el momento ahorita de esto que ha pasado los últimos después de la pandemia sí mire mucho, muchos vendedores, muchas personas que sacaron sus puestos a vender a la calle. Eh, igual mire, se mira muchas regulaciones de que no tienen la, no siguen los rules de salubridad. Ah, yo me miré en la situación igual de que no tenía trabajo y decidí salir a vender a la calle también, pero siguiendo los rules de higiene, de salubridad, de menos tener un bote para las manos, para jabón, desinfectante y todo siguiendo. Pero yo trabajo en restaurantes por muchos años. Ah, pero al darme cuenta que sí causaba un, un problema los negocios establecidos, pues mejor decidí parar y seguir por el camino legal, buscar información, cómo podía abrir mi negocio, cómo podía ponerme en la calle, vender de una forma segura. Empecé a buscar información. Hay información, solo que tenemos que buscarla. Eh, estuve también en, en un consejo que dieron de workshop unas semanas, una semana atrás y hay mucha información que es valiosa para nosotros como comunidad latina. Solo es que tenemos que buscarla y tenemos que asesorarnos bien para llegar a nuestro propósito. Yo creo que todos queremos tener un negocio, pero sí como hablan los, este, los vecinos que tienen negocio sí les, sí les afectamos a ellos porque ellos tienen que pagar sus taxis, sus empleados, su luz y eso es un poquito de, eh, muy incómodo para ellos cerrar su sueño de decir, hey, llegué al momento de que yo ya no puedo continuar con mi negocio porque me han afectado. He mirado que hoy esta noche escuché que va a haber muchas regulaciones e implementaciones y eso va a ser bueno para, para, para nuestro condado. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. My name is Efren Aguila. I have been living in the Canal for twenty Uh good night everybody, my name is Efraída. I have been living in the Canal for twenty-five years. And what I have been noticing is that after the pandemic, a lot of these uh street vendors um just started to appear in the street. And then uh yeah, a lot of them, they don't follow the rules of uh of of health. Um it's like I, I decided to to start selling on the street. But I was following all all the safety rules, you know, I have soap, I have a container with water. Uh because I know how to do this, because I work in the restaurant business for a lot of uh for several years. And then I decided to start my business but uh on within within the law. Um and then um you know, I I opened my own business. There is information, there's a lot of information, but you need to look for it. Uh I attended a a workshop a couple of weeks ago and it was very valuable for the Latin community. But definitely you need to look for it, you need to um you need to look for help to find all this information. And uh and then yeah, I agree, um you know, it's affecting a lot of the local businesses that pay taxes and um and 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 electricity. But I I don't want them to um you know, to close, to 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 give up their dreams. Uh I think that we need to continue with the regulation and the implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Uh buenas noches, mi nombre es Cruz Vargas, tengo treinta años viviendo en el, en la comunidad de Canal. Soy voluntaria de Voces del Canal y del Consejo de Residentes del Canal. Estoy aquí por la problemática que hay en nuestra comunidad con los vendedores ambulantes. Sé que todos tenemos necesidades, pero también creo que las cosas se tienen que hacer bien. Ya que es un tema muy delicado que es la venta de comida en la calle. Esto está causando tráfico, hace que se estacionen en dobles, dobles líneas. Nos afecta cuando vamos a pasar y de ambos, de ambos lados nos hace problemática con los demás uh conductores porque no podemos pasar, ¿verdad? Nos hace a ver más basura en la calle, aceite en las coladeras, que ahorita ya viene el tiempo de aguas. Se nos van a tapar las coladeras, va a haber inundaciones. Y eso no está pensando la gente que tira el aceite en las coladeras. En los cruces peatonales, muchas veces me ha pasado que voy a cruzar, no puedo cruzar porque está tan demasiada la gente acumulada ahí, que los carros que van pasando piensan que soy una de las compradoras que está ahí y no me dejan pasar. Los carros ya no pasan para dar, a lo que estaba diciendo, ya no paran para darle el paso a las personas que están esperando a la comida ahí y no dejan pasar. Ah las ah no cumplen con las reglas necesarias. Eh deben de tener entrenamientos para poder manejar comida. Eh para poder manejar los alimentos, ¿verdad? Lo o manejar, trabajar con los códigos requeridos y correctos. Yo creo que esto evitará enfermedades a nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Um good night everybody, my name is uh Cruz Vargas. I've been living in the Canal for thirty years. I'm also part of uh Voces del Canal and residents from uh the Canal. Um I would like to talk about all the problems that uh the street vendors are causing. Ca- causing, I mean, things they need to be done the right way. And especially when we're talking about food, that is just such a delicate um matter. They, as as my um my cowork, I mean, as my um friend was saying, there's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of uh cars that are parked uh park in double, in double lines. And then uh they're also affecting the sidewalks. You cannot uh pass from one place to the other on both sides. Uh and then also uh all the, all the trash that is being uh left there. And they also, they dump all the uh, all the oil into the sewers. And then right now, the rainy season is going to start and they just going to um, they're just going to collapse those sewers. Um and and then also, when I'm trying to cross the street uh I can't even cross the street anymore because there's so many uh street vendors that they think that I'm one of the people buying food, so they just don't let me pass. Um I mean, I I agree that they should, they could be food, but they need to follow the rules. They need to have a training on how to handle food. And they need to follow all the codes. So we can avoid um uh sickness in our community. Thank you.
Welcome.
Buenas noches, uh mi nombre es Mario Santay y uh vivo en el área del Canal uh por casi veinte años también. Y estoy aquí porque uh quiero hacer uh valer mi voz y querer um un mejor futuro para mi comunidad. Ah he visto muchos vendedores en en las calles. Ah no estoy en contra de la venta de comida. Pero sí estoy en contra de la forma en que lo hacen, cómo lo preparan, cómo lo sirven, en dónde lo venden. Porque no es saludable y atrae a muchas a, digamos, moscas, ratas y por por lo mismo porque es la comida. Entonces, por eso es que estoy en contra. Y también este, las personas que el, que sirven la, las comidas este, no, no, no siguen un un higiene. Eh y muchas veces, yo tengo mi familia y a veces voy allá a comprar comida y a veces miro que no lo hacen bien. Entonces, tuve, tuve una experiencia hace poquito una señora vendiendo elotes y estaba contando el dinero con unos guantes. Pero luego ah me sirvió la comida o lo que le pedí ah con el mismo guantes eh exprimiendo un limón en la comida y y lo estaba exprimiendo y lavando lo que estaba en el guantes después de contar el dinero. Entonces, eso no es bueno y pues yo quiero que se regule todo. Y muchas gracias por, por ustedes para, porque están para hacerlo y ojalá que, que mi comunidad este, esté limpio ah siempre y vea un mejor futuro para, para mi comunidad. Muchas gracias por todo y espero que ah los vendedores encuentren un mejor lugar para poder poder vender la comida y yo felizmente con mi familia poder ir a comprar y comer y estar en familia comprando la, la comida que vendan. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh good night everybody, my name is Mario Santay. I also um live in the Canal for over twenty years. And I am here uh to raise my, my voice for a better future for my community. It's not that I'm against uh people selling food, but I'm against the way they serve the food and the way they're selling the food. It is not healthy. It it attracts a lot of flies, it attracts a lot of rats. And um and they don't follow the, the, the safety um, the safety codes. Uh I'm just gonna tell you a story. Uh I was buying uh uh a corn. And then I saw how the, the, the vendor had glo- gloves. But then he grabbed, uh she grabbed the corn, like she put lemon on it. And then when I was giving him, her, the money, she was counting the money with the same gloves. So that's not good, I mean, that's not good. Thank you for trying to regulate this. Uh because I want a better future for my community and for my family. Thank you.
Thank you, we're gonna toggle the interpreter, one moment. Ready for you, welcome.
Buenas noches a todos, muchas gracias uh por sus comentarios y por trabajar en esto. Soy, mi nombre es Javier y soy parte también del Consejo de Nuestro Canal, Nuestro Futuro. Como podemos ver en esta noche, hay muchos comentarios. Um no podemos negar que hay muchos retos con este, en este trabajo. También eh ah quisiera decir que es una oportunidad para la comunidad también mejorar. Pienso que muchos negocios ah no tienen su permiso primero por la falta de preparación. Y eso es algo que quisiera pedirles a ustedes, que los trámites se puedan hacer un poco más ágiles y más tal vez sencillos en lo que se pueda hacer. Porque esa es a mejor la parte difícil, ¿no?, el llegar a, a aprender como experiencia. Yo hoy intenté también ah vender y quise tratar de hacerlo de la forma mejor posible. Pero igual me enfrenté primero con el, la barrera del idioma. Eh traté de buscar información en internet y me fue un poco complicado por tantos procesos que tienen que hacer, que a veces es lo complicado, ¿verdad? No podemos negar que la comunidad también necesita oportunidad de trabajo. La misma comunidad está generando sus oportunidades de trabajo creando sus negocios. Entonces, yo estoy de acuerdo que vendan, pero también estoy de acuerdo que deben seguir eh los ordenamientos de salubridad. Y también deberían, bueno, si es su buena idea tener un lugar donde se pueda vender de forma segura eh para todos. Eh eso son mis comentarios, muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening everybody, uh I'd like to thank everybody first for their, for their comments um and for all the expressions that they, that they made and sharing their, their, their thoughts and feelings. My name is Javier and I also am a member of the organization Nuestro Canal, Nuestro Alliance. I realize that in this process, there are a lot of uh challenges that, that, that exist. Um you know, the communities just looking for, for, for an opportunity uh to, to create business uh to create work and you know, a lot of times the, the, you know, they might wanna go through the proper uh channels or the proper process, but isn't it, but it isn't always easy. And they always, they don't always know uh where to look. Uh I myself, uh a while back, uh wanted to, wanted to start my own business uh as, as well and I, you know, tried looking through the proper channels looking for information on how to properly uh go about it, but it was a challenge for me. Uh especially with, with, with the language barrier and and it and uh it wasn't, it wasn't always, it wasn't always easy. And our community again, they just wanna work, they need work, they wanna create opportunities uh where they, where they can work. And they do, I do realize though that it's important that we follow the proper um health guidelines and proper uh channels for, for getting the, 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 the right permits. And so we just need, you know, help getting educated on this.
Welcome.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Floridál Marrodas, soy miembro de Voces del Canal y también de Nuestro Canal, Nuestro Futuro. Y pues mi comentario es que las personas que se van a dedicar en dar las licencias o permisos para las personas que venden, que tengan mucho, que tengan en cuenta de que no va a ser una expansión que se va a hacer porque en realidad yo he caminado en estos negocios que hay. Y no se puede caminar porque mucha gente en un lado y en el otro. Y también lo que es la higiene, hay ventas donde están al imperio del tiempo. Ah no, no se dedican, que dijeran van a tapar, por ejemplo, el, la cebolla, el cilantro, la comida. No, no lo tapan. Y cuando pasa el vaso, carros, ese polvo se va a la comida. Y luego ahí vienen las enfermedades para la comunidad. Y entonces eso tienen que tomar muy en cuenta por, tienen que, para que tengan clases de higiene y también que, que lleven en cuenta los códigos que van a presentar. Es todo, gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening everybody, my name is Floridál Ro- uh Rhodes. And I am a, a member of Voces del Canal and also Nuestro Canal, Nuestro, Nuestro Futuro. And I'd like to direct the following words to um those that are gonna be in charge of, of, of making these permits or helping people get, get, get these permits for, for these businesses. Uh one of the things that you gotta keep in mind is that right now, there's just really no room for, for, for expansion. There's, there's so little, there's so much room that's already being taken up. Um there's very little hygiene with a lot of these businesses where they don't properly cover uh their food. Um like, like fresh produce, like onions, uh like cilantro and, and, and other things. And so when you don't properly cover these things, that's when you have uh, you know, the potential for, for dangers like uh, like food going bad. And of course, that's going to uh harm people who then are going to eat that or consume that and make, and make them sick. Um you also have to take in, in consideration two uh buses and cars that are, that are driving by and all the, the smoke and dust that, that, that they, that they give off or lift up. And all that stuff's getting on the food and then people are consuming that. And that's making, making people sick as well. So um all of that, of course, it's bad, it's bad for everybody. So when these permits or the process of permits is, is being uh dealt out, there's gotta be classes and, and, and education about, you know, requirements and, and codes so that people learn to follow them.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, good evening everyone. Mi nombre es Marina Palma y soy una líder comunitaria. Vivo en Canal por treinta y cinco años y sigo trabajando como voluntaria en Canal. Y estoy aquí hoy para apoyar firmemente el punto siete B de la agenda. El programa de venta de alimentos a móviles propuesto y la ordenanza revisada. Esto es más que una simple actualización regulatoria, es una oportunidad económica y cultura, y cultural para San Rafael. Esta nueva ordenanza proporciona un camino formal y legal para muchos residentes talentosos del Canal que durante mucho tiempo han tratado de hacer sus negocios culinarios realidad y que han sido duramente ganados. Instamos al consejo a garantizar que este programa se implemente con un claro enfoque en ser verdaderamente culturalmente responsable, lo que significa entrada de baja barrera, que ya lo dijo él. A procesos de permisos accesibles y servicios de apoyo adaptados a nuestra diversa comunidad empresarial. Esta ordenanza puede transformar la venta informal en, en microempresas legales creando estabilidad y generando nuevos ingresos para la ciudad. Al adoptar este programa, estamos abrazando la vitalidad del vecindario de Canal y sentando las bases para una economía local equitativa. Por favor, apruebe esta ordenanza y haga realidad esta oportunidad. Deseo pedir también de que el horario que, que propusieron de ocho a ocho se me hace muy temprano porque mucha, la mayoría de personas que viven en Canal trabajan desde bien temprano y llegan bien noche. Si pudieran, por favor, este, trabajar en ese horario, que comiencen un poco más temprano y aunque sea una hora más este, eso ayudaría mucho. Estoy consciente que han habido muchas cosas, muchos errores que han pasado, pero yo, yo estoy segura que todo va a cambiar con su apoyo. Gracias.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marina Palma. And I'm here today to strongly support Agenda Item Seven B. The Proposed Mobile Food Vending Program and Revised Ordinance. This is more than just a regulatory update, it's an economic and cultural opportunity for San Rafael. This new ordinance provides a formal legal pathway for many talented Canal residents who have long sought to legitimize their hard-earned culinary businesses. We urge the council to ensure this program is implemented with a clear focus on being truly culturally responsible. Meaning low barrier entry, accessible permitting processes and support services tailored to our diverse entrepreneurial community. This ordinance can transform informal vending into legal microbusinesses creating stability and generating new revenue for the city. By adopting this program, we are embracing the vibrancy of the Canal neighborhood and laying the foundation for an equitable local economy. Please approve this ordinance and make this
Please approve this ordinance and make this opportunity a reality. Thank you. I'd also like to say, um, that I wanted to mention lastly is that if you guys could please also has been mentioned before, maybe expand, uh, the hours, uh, permitted for, for business because as has been said before, a lot of people leave really early to work and get out very, get out very late. Uh, so if we could expand those hours, I think that that would be of great benefit to a lot of, to a lot of people. I know that throughout, uh, this process, there have been many mistakes that have probably been made, but I'm very confident that you guys will do what's best for, for everyone. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sharon Velasco and I am here today representing my mom and community. In two thousand sixteen, my stepdad had a stroke which caused many financial issues. It wasn't easy for my mom because she had me and my little brother to care for. They got the idea to sell food because there weren't, they weren't going to let me or my little brother starve. However, it wasn't enough and needed something bigger. Around three years ago, they got the idea to sell on the street and it went better than expected. Financially, we got a bit better and things started to turn around for good. On October twenty twenty four, we found out my mom had cancer and she had to stop working due to chemotherapy. She wasn't able to work and the city coming around and throwing out food and handing out tickets didn't help much either. I'm not here today to ask for money or food, but I'm here today to ask you to let us work and be able to food, to be able to put food on the table for us and our children.
Y para la gente que está aquí, siempre ha habido tráfico en las calles, no es nada diferente. Yo he vivido aquí por dieciocho años en Canal y el tráfico siempre ha estado ahí. La problema no es siempre es la, la gente que está vendiendo, pero si no también los carros. Un carro no se maneja solo, una gente también, alguien también debería que estar ahí. Ya, y si gente no quiere comprar de su restaurante, ese no es el problema de la gente. Hay mucha competencia y si la gente le gusta alguien, algo más, otra comida, entonces le va a gustar, pero ese no es un problema de ustedes. Cambien su menú o hagan algo diferente para que puedan vender mejor, pero eso no es la, la problema de la gente que está en la calle. La gente que está en la calle están ahí para sobrevivir y poder comer, no nada más están ahí por, por querer. Mi mamá está ahí porque tiene cáncer, intaca, soportarán a mí y mi hermano y no tiene a nadie más. Mi papá se me fue desde una edad muy chiquita y nada más la tengo a ella y mi padre es el que tampoco puede trabajar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, would you like me to, to, to interpret the last portion that she directed to, to members of the audience?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so to the, to the members of the audience who have been complaining about, uh, about traffic and problems that, uh, that mobile vendors are, are, are causing because of that. A long time before any of these mobile vendors, uh, started to, to, to post up, there have been issues and problems with, with, with traffic. Traffic is, traffic is more of a problem, remember that there are people who are driving those cars. They're the ones who are choosing to, to drive in a way or do things like park where they, where they shouldn't. That's not a problem of the, of, of the vendors. And for those who are complaining that their businesses aren't thriving anymore or their businesses have been suffering. I'm sorry, but that's not our problem either. Maybe you should, uh, look for a way to enhance your business a little more. Maybe change something on your menu. If people don't wanna go to your restaurant to buy food, how is that on us? How is that all our problem? All my mom is trying to do is live and survive and earn and earn money. She's, my mom suffers from cancer. My father, my, my stepfather can't work either. And my, my, my father hasn't been in the, in, in the picture for, for a while. All they're trying to do is just provide the basic necessities for myself and, and, and my, and my brother. So you guys have to, have to get over a, a lot of those issues, issues that you're having because all we're trying to do is, is live as well.
Thank you. Anyone else like to provide comment? Not, oh. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jose. I'm also a member of nuestro canal, nuestro futuro and a thirty, thirty-year, uh, member of the community in Canal and I've lived, uh, born and raised in Canal. Um, so I'm here to support the vendors. I feel like we are about fifteen, twenty years late in updating our mobile vending. Um, so I would want for that to pass, uh, but also making the information as everybody's mentioned accessible for all. I tried as purposes to, for today. It took me two weeks, three weeks to figure out and finally make it to the application. Um, so making that very accessible as well as the commercial kitchens. I know that's been the, the biggest issue, uh, so finding that out. I know of a location, a Bahia Vista, that does have a commercial kitchen that could be used, um, for, for rental space, um, as well. Um, I know there's a market space idea, which is, I think is great. I know that there's a piece of land, not sure if it's city-owned or private, at the corner of Castro and Francisco Boulevard, which I know I think Marin Transit is trying to do their busing. Um, so again, I think that's one of the last places in Canal that's not, uh, built, uh, or any infrastructure. Um, also just wanna make sure, uh, that the enforcement of regulations is on regulations and not on people. That's what I heard about the town today. And also just to close off, um, I wanna, I heard DEI inclusion equity from you all here today. So I wanna make sure that street vending is part of our culture as the Latino community, but it's also now part of the San Rafael culture as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to provide public comment?
Okay, not seeing anyone else. I'll close the public comment. Thank you for all the excellent input. I did jot down a couple of questions that were embedded in both the input we received. So I'll just read what I've heard and hopefully we'll catch them. Um, a lot about how to help people obtain a permit, a lot about that. Overcoming the language challenge. Can there be workshops in Spanish? We just heard took two weeks to navigate that. Technical assistance, so a lot around that. There was a very specific question around permits for special events in response to a community emergency. So probably an isolated event. Uh, there was a comment concern around how do you protect local restaurants? So maybe quickly talking about SB nine four six kind of, because our regulations don't speak to that, but maybe why. And then last, there was a concern that vendors might be able to sell beer. So I think, and I know that's in the ordinance, but if you could, um, speak to that. But I really think the, the Spanish speaking and the technical assistance would be really critical.
Sure, okay. Start with, start with the alcohol and work backwards. Um, so beer is, would, is prohibited. The selling of beer is prohibited by mobile vendors under this ordinance. Um, with respect to hours of operation, there are a couple of comments about that. Our, uh, ordinance mirrors SB nine four six, which pre, preempts local jurisdictions in that we can, in non-residential zones, our hours of operation restrictions cannot be more restrictive than the hours of any other businesses on that block. So our baseline is eight AM to eight PM unless another business is open, um, for, for, uh, outside of those hours. So then the baseline is just our, the city's noise ordinance. Um, in terms of, um, brick and mortar competition, again, SB nine four six is a state law, preempts local laws. It explicitly prohibits local jurisdictions from banning mobile vendors and it pr- prevents us from considering, considering economic competition or anything other than objective health and safety factors in terms of how we regulate mobile vendors. Um, however, by establishing this ordinance, we're, we're increasing the, the requirements that are currently non-existent from the city's Samperfell's perspective for mobile vendors. So for example, in terms of taxes, currently a brick and mortar is paying business tax to the city and they have to obtain a seller's permit to pay sales taxes to the city. This ordinance is gonna require mobile vendors to do the same. Um, and in terms of health permit requirements, a brick and, I mean, Director Jones can, can speak to this much better than I can. But the brick and mortar food establishment would have to comply with the health department and, and get, pay whatever fees are required. Same here for mobile vendors. The only difference is that we are proposing, we could potentially charge a fee for our time processing mobile vending applications, which is an extra permit that a brick and mortar establishment doesn't have to get. And that is the twenty-five-dollar nominal fee that we suggested. But otherwise, it's, it's, to the extent that we can have a, uh, apples-to-apples conversation between brick and mortar and, uh, mobile vendors. Um, that's, that's, that's part, this ordinance is, to the extent that SB nine four six allows, uh, leveling the playing field. Did I, sorry, I missed anything?
Yep, you've, amazing, and then around technical assistance and, um, language.
So most definitely, so part of what we're, we wanna put in place over the winter, again, to have like a strong launch, uh, in the spring, is to ensure that all of our materials are available in multiple languages and that we have a bilingual, uh, uh, ideally partner with a community-based organization to provide bilingual technical assistance to help navigate the permitting process, to identify what are the barriers and is it, is access to commercial kitchen or is it, uh, working together at a shared marketplace? So, uh, definitely look forward to, to putting those, uh, technical assistance and bilingual materials in place.
And, uh, to add to that, uh, this is, this is something that we're putting a lot of focus on with our environmental health food program in general. Uh, it is an area where there's a lot of room for improvement. I, I don't think anybody really wants to absorb a one hundred and eight-page field guide to food permitting uh, in order to open a business. Uh, you're very busy when you're doing that. And so we, um, are exploring a lot of, uh, really looking comprehensively at the technical assistance, the information that we provide, uh, for all food permit categories. And so, and need to work with all of the cities on all of those categories. Um, and would continue, of course, to work with San Rafael on that. But that was the biggest takeaway when we held our food permitting workshop last week was that, um, people just wanna know what they need to do, um, and that would make it a lot easier for them.
Fantastic. Thank you.
If I may add around the technical assistance, certainly the county is a critical partner because of their role in permitting around, um, food establishments. But we're also looking to partner with groups such as Small Business Development Corporation and Marin that can provide technical assistance on how to start a business. And so there are other, there are other aspects of running a business. Of course, food handling and food safety is critical that we would look to partner with when we start the local vendor program.
Thank you. Fantastic. I think there was just one question about, uh, permits for special events in response to a community emergency. I think that might fall under the, you had already spoken to that, you're not going to, it, it, it's complaint-driven. So if there's communities coming around, rallying around somebody and doing a bake sale, I think that was already answered. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you, Director Jones. I'll bring it back to the council for any, um, do you have any questions or I'll go to comments? You have a question? Yes, Councilmember Hill. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I had a follow-up question on, uh, is more around the implementation, which is, um, with all of the distancing, I, I think it would be very difficult for, um, anyone to be able to just say, you know, look at it, look at the streets and say, I know I can positively put, um, a stall here or sell here. Um, how are we gonna help folks navigate to positive places of, you know, rather than it being a metaphorically a whack-a-mole scenario? It's like, no, you're in the wrong place. Here's the right place. Um, how are we gonna help people identify where they can vend?
Yeah, we can, we can provide, uh, educational informational materials that include a map of, of eligible locations. I mean, to have a compliments, to comprehensively know everywhere in San Rafael, probably be a link that you click on and, or, you know, QR code that could take you to a link where you could see a map of eligible locations. But, um, definitely, uh, appreciate the, the point of having positive direction as opposed to just, here's what, here are things you can't do and here's a long list of things you can't do, so that it's clear how to comply.
Totally, and it's not a trivial thing. And, um, I know I'm at the, the dais saying, well, how are you gonna do it? I, I think that that's, um, a detail, because stating what, you know, negatively where you can't do it or positively, both of them are, I think, are difficult to, to do, um, easily. So thanks for taking that question.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurt's question, then Vice Mayor.
Um, I do have another question because we know with these ordinances, details matter. Um, and I just wanna confirm that the ordinance that we're looking at tonight was, has been reviewed by the community and it has been translated into Spanish. And so they, they have the specifics of that, what this language is right now?
Um, the ordinance was posted as part of the legislative process to the extent that it was, I don't, I don't know if it was translating to Spanish.
Because it's, there's some very, very specific pieces that I think I'm, I'm hedging a little bit because we know we need an ordinance and the language in here is very detailed, as it needs to be, and very specific. But I want the community to understand what, what we're signing on to, if that's the approach the council takes. So I'm, I'm just wanna make sure that, I don't know how we are with that.
What we can do is between now, we can have some sort of summary, um, because to your point, it did, it is highly technical, but we can look in ways that we can try to distill this information into something that would be, um, more easily digestible because there is, there is quite a bit of detail. And so we can, um, circle up to think about how best to do that between now and the next reading of the ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bushy.
I'm, I'm trying to understand the, the timeline here. We just listened to an hour of testimony from our residents, basically asking for enforcement of basic safety laws, the food laws, the pedestrian laws, waste management laws. As I understand your proposal, we're going to build out this program, which is six months to roll out. And then the program to get permits, to help people get permits. And only when that has happened will we start doing any significant enforcement. Is that, or how, how is that going to, um, roll out in, in, in what sequence? Bearing in mind the testimony we have just heard.
Um, well, enforcement's ongoing with the existing tools that we have of citations and pounding food. I think as soon as we have our, our protocols in place to, um, add the additional tool of seizing the equipment, we will implement that. It's not necessarily that we have to have it. I mean, I guess, I suppose in a perfect world, everything would be ready at the exact same time, but there's no requirement. So as soon as, uh, we have the protocols in place, we could, um, commence the, the additional enforcement strategy.
That, our people are asking for, and when would that, do?
Well, that's where I said conservatively speaking, I would say spring of next year, but I hope that would happen well before that.
So your answer to the testimony tonight is sit tight for six months and maybe something will change?
Well, I think I hear that there's still, your enforcement is still happening.
Okay.
In, in the meantime, I mean, I, I've heard you say that several times. So thanks to the county environmental health, thanks to our SRPD, that is still ongoing.
And our people want that.
And we have a second reading to confirm of the ordinance, right? So.
It's an ordinance?
Yeah, so we have a second reading and then after the second reading is at fifteen days or something, so.
Being at the time?
Thirty days.
That's just totally referred to it. It has to come back.
Just for clarification, second ordinance, when, if it's approved second time, then it's thirty days. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Um, Councilmember Micah, why don't you start with comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the, for the rapport and again for the partnership with the county because obviously we couldn't do it on our own. Really appreciate our community being here. I mean, I'm so amazed by all the leaders that they came here tonight, uh, to speak about, about this issue. They are the ones that actually brought it to my attention in the first place. So, and I think it's just a fine balance between, um, supporting our local entrepreneurs, our local businesses, our single moms, everybody who wants to have their own business, our restaurants as well, our restaurant, um, our commercial community. And have, I think it's, uh, it's been said tonight, it's just, uh, having some rules that they can be followed. I, I think our focus is, are on everybody who lives here in San Rafael and wants to have a business. Um, having seventy-five percent of the people coming from Richmond, Oakland and Sacramento, to me, they don't have a business to be here and they shouldn't be in our community. We should really, um, encourage our local residents to have their businesses and really go and support them. So, um, I, I'm curious about the hours of operations. I hear what you said, that if there's not a business on that block that has, um, different hours, that that's what has been established from the state. Um, so if that's what it is, I guess, um, it, I think it, it would make sense to have a little bit earlier and a little bit later. Obviously not midnight, but you know, but again, if, if there's nothing that can be done about that, um, I hear you. Um, in the technical support, I think it's going to be great. In the technical support, I think it's going to be great. And what you were suggesting about using like a third party that can help, can help integrate the county's health regulations, we, what is to be, have a business license and to, to establish a business, I think that's going to be super important. And being able to make it, I don't know, now there are like all these YouTube videos as well, and maybe it's just an idea. I know that again, we do have amazing leaders in our community that, that they can really support anything that we bring to the, to the plate. But I really wanted to thank you for bringing this up because it's been an issue for a while. And so I'm really hoping that this is going to make a difference. So, and again, thank you, the county, you have like big, you know, a big part of the, for this to work, it really has to have like a, the enforcement. So yeah, thank you, and we'll be watching and see the progress.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I support the ordinance as proposed and I request accelerated enforcement.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
I support the ordinance. I also want to make sure though, we're not being overly complicated in that, what we're doing, because the rules are going to need to apply to all. I mean, that's part of the reason for the ordinance. And so it, it can't be, oh, it's sort of this one, but not that one. It, it's going to be all or none. And we know the problem we're trying to solve. And I, and I agree, it's, it's, we have, there's so many problems we heard tonight. We are, we know what the problem is. I am concerned about the level of enforcement that's needed. We really need this word of the county, and thank you. And as, as Councilmember Bushy suggested at the beginning, what, what do we need to do to help with that? The more we can, you know, let us know. I don't see this as being enforceable by our PD. I, I'm concerned about that. And so I think that we really, we need to look at this ordinance, we really need to understand the process, the technical. There are communities that have figured this out and the first step for us is having something on the books that we actually can be able to use. So I, I appreciate everyone's help, I appreciate the community coming out and speaking to this, but we're hearing that we need to have a balance in terms of, of how do we enforce and how do we allow? So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you Mayor Kate. Thank you Assistant Director Biner. Thank you Director Jones, and thank you Assistant City Manager Robinson Pinon for taking in all of these, all the testimony and questions, our questions this evening. I'm going to echo a lot of what my colleagues have indicated. This issue is complex for many reasons. There are so many different personas involved, important personas in our community. There are folks who want to have economic empowerment, both folks who are fledging and both folks who have brick and mortar already established. There are folks who are just passerby's who want to be able to navigate sidewalks safely and be able to potentially, you know, consume food in a way that they can rely that it is safe. We also want to make certain that we can support our, our local community and emphasize support for our local community. The navigation and constraints of state laws, I think, while honorable, I think are very challenging for us to navigate here, to support the people that we want to support. I am going to be supporting this, this ordinance this evening. I am going to wish us well that we can both create, as I think Councilmember Kurtz articulated, the balance of enforcement and allowance. And I hope we get it right the first time, but I also want us to be collectively having grace for ourselves to make certain we can tune it and make certain that we can help our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also thank the community for coming out and sharing your lived experience and what you hope to see here in San Rafael. This has been a long time coming. I was reflecting that we had a meeting in June of 2024, Assistant City Manager Robinson Pinon and Director Jones, we were all on a Zoom. And the reason it has taken so long is we wanted to do the community input, we wanted to find how to have the balance, how to look at that trade-off. And so this has been a long time coming. The community has been giving us input, brick and mortar businesses have been giving us input. I appreciate that you have gained the program concepts from other communities, from cities, and as Councilmember Hill just said, hopefully we'll get it right the first time, but this is a really important step. Without this tool, we was very difficult, if not impossible, to go beyond just the, I won't say haphazard kind of citing. So this is a very clear program that is bolstered by having the additional technical advice for the 25%. When I think about that number, such a small percentage, we can help the folks here that want to become entrepreneurs in our community. So thank you to staff, I know you've worked very, very hard on this. Again, appreciate the community with your input and my counsel for the thoughtful commentary this evening and questions. And I will turn to Councilmember Mica to make a motion.
Thank you Mayor. I'll move to make a motion to introduce the ordinance, waive further reading and refer to it by title only.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Scolari.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. I request the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the San Rafael City Council, amending Title 10 Businesses, Professions, Occupations, Industries, and Trade of the Municipal Code of the City of San Rafael to adopt Chapter 10.50 Mobile Vending Permit Program.
Thank you. We have a next one, right? Correct? You want to?
Yes.
You want to keep going? Okay.
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution, adding mobile vending permit program fees to the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Scolari.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. One more motion please.
Well, let me take this one.
Okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
We adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an inter-local enforcement memorandum of understanding with the county of Marin.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and I do want to say thank you to the county that we are entering into a formal MOU, fancy way of saying we are committed to working on this all the way to the, forever, forever. And moved and seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Scolari.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. That concludes this agenda item. Thank you to the interpreters for your work this evening, we appreciate that. We do have another agenda item, but we are going to take a five-minute break so people can just stand up and folks can leave the, the chambers. So we will recommence in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for taking a brief recess. We have an agenda item, one more agenda item this evening. It is the City Council Three-Year Strategic Plan for fiscal year 2025-2026 and work plan for 2025-2026. Actually, should, three years should be 2025 to 2028. And then the work plan, right? Are we just, anyway, I'll turn it over to the city manager and she can explain why it says that.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. We are here this evening to provide you with a slightly revised three-year strategic plan, just a couple of minor revisions, but we wanted the council to re-adopt that. And then the 25-26 annual work plan. So the recommend, the recommended action is for the council to adopt the revised three-year strategic plan for 25-28 and adopt the fiscal year 25-26 annual work plan and authorize the city manager to make administrative adjustments and clarifications to the work plan. So, did that answer your question, Mayor Kate? It's both, it's three-year and one-year.
It does, I still think there's a typo in the topic.
There well might be, we will correct that. Um, I know it's late, I'm gonna provide a little bit of background and context setting for those who don't have it, haven't been with us along this journey. Last fall, the 2024 City Council Retreat, staff brought a new strategic planning approach to the council for consideration, which the council then adopted. That's kicked off about a six-month project where staff put together a three-year strategic plan, which was adopted by the council in June, which targets advancement in seven priority areas through specific measurable goals and objectives. Staff developed seven individual work plans for each of the priority areas over the last few months, which detail the specific activities and initiatives that are planned for this fiscal year. Uh, the strategic planning framework, just to speak at a high level about the purpose and, and what's behind the methodology, we really felt like it was important to bring forward a tool for transparency, both to the community and the council, that ensured alignment between staff, the city council, and the community about what is it that, what are the strategic objectives that we are targeting to complete, both in the three-year time span, but as we're here tonight for, to talk more deeply about our annual plan. One of the reasons we feel like this is so important is that in the nature of our business, uh, next slide, please, we have to constantly reprioritize things in the business of local government, and there are many things that are not in the city's control. This is not something that San Rafael only struggles with. We hear this from other cities as well, where we set out, we have a plan, and then inevitably something happens, an emergency, et cetera. So I just kinda wanted to highlight what those, um, those matters are because they are pretty regular. And so when we, when we set the strategic plan and the annual work plan in place, I really wanna emphasize that, that this document is living and breathing and it will change. It is not intended to stay static, we will need to adapt and adjust. And the intentionality of having the city council adopt this work plan is so that as items move forward, we can make sure that alignment on priorities and reprioritization. And when a new emerging priority comes forward, we can make a recommendation to say, these three things are not gonna happen until the fiscal year if this thing needs to move forward or move faster, or, you know, so, so that's, that will be the process that staff is developing. You'll hear more about that later in the presentation. So we have things like brand-new laws that we absolutely cannot control, other unfunded mandates, regulation, we have emergencies, pandemics, those sorts of things, the, the tragic fire we had in the canal, operations in all of our strategic initiatives, for the most part, almost every city department was engaged in supporting the victims of that fire, pretty much everything goes to that for the, you know, two, three weeks and onward. So, um, intergovernmental dynamics, um, this is things like there's this last minute, there's an opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, or a grant opportunity that we feel like is too good to pass up, so that can shift priorities. And then stuff comes up in the community. The mobile food vending item, for example, just kinda escalated and escalated and needed to, we needed to deprioritize other things in order to make space to do all the incredible staff work to get here this evening. And then we do have, you know, staffing shortages and technology disruptions. Luckily, we're in a much better position staffing-wise, but a couple of years ago, we had very, very high vacancies and it makes it incredibly difficult to, um, both, uh, provide excellent core services as well as deliver on these key council priorities. So, as an example, we've added two, uh, new objectives to the three-year strategic plan, hence the recommendation to re-adopt the strategic plan, because in the time span from June to now, right, the emerging priorities are upon us. So, um, intergovernmental dynamics, we had this incredible opportunity to acquire and secure the 620 Canal Site, which on the work plan, we've added assessing and exploring options for interim use. What I, what I noted here in adding this is, previously on the work plan, we had identified the evaluation of the cannabis program to begin this fiscal year, and when this needed to bump up, um, then we deferred that program evaluation to the second year in the work plan. So it's still in the strategic plan, evaluating the cannabis program, but because the 620 Canal project really elevated as a very, very high council priority, we moved that up. Um, and it, and it was, it's timing, right, seizing the moment. State and federal mandates, uh, implementing requirements of SB 707 regarding virtual public comment, public meetings, and translated meeting agendas. Our esteemed elected city clerk, Lindsay Laras, had to adjust her work plan. Her plan was to implement citywide the electronic document management system, um, which will need to also be deferred to the second year of the strategic plan in order to meet that, um, that, that mandate. So just a little sample of more to come, um, when we continuously update the council and the community on as new things arise and we need to make adjustments. So I, um, I also, before I turn it over to the staff, director team is here, there's been a ton of work, the assistant city managers, Sean and his team on the, and Vetica on the performance metrics that you're gonna hear some more about, there's just been the body of work behind this document, both the three-year strategic plan and the details of really trying to articulate to the council and the community. Tonight, we're talking about the how. You've set the vision, the priority areas, the goals and objectives, that's at the council level, and what we've done over the last couple of months is really dig deep into how are we gonna get all those things done? So I'll turn it over to John.
Cool, thank you, Christine. So, uh, I love this balancing excellence, which I think perfectly describes our team. So part of, you know, what this work is, uh, this work planning process is seeking to achieve is to provide the council, staff, and the community what we refer to as complete comparative context, which is one of my favorite sayings, uh, for all the things that we do as a city. So, uh, as detailed in the staff report, our team does a Herculean amount of work in a given year. And with that, we have to look at all new initiatives and balance that with ensuring that we're providing excellent core services, those things that we were chartered, established as a city to provide. And so as Christine said, you know, this work plan is a living document, and it's so alive that we actually have some administrative edits that we need to make, uh, tomorrow, uh, non-substantive in nature, but we'll make those part of posting this on the city's website. Uh, so it's definitely a work in progress, but we'll be making tweaks to that massive Excel file, so we go to the next one. Um, so, uh, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we, there's a, there's a lot that our team does, and I would be remiss if we didn't take an opportunity here to just call out what the core services are in the broader context of what's included in this, uh, work plan. Um, you know, from public safety and emergency response, focusing on community-based policing and fire suppression, wildfire prevention, the safe team, um, as well as coordinating with Marin County Emergency Operations, uh, crew, as well as our EOC, library and rec, you know, we're building a new library, we just opened up another one, these are our community centers, hubs for learning, health, and culture, um, but also our childcare programs, which we operate multiple preschool and school-age childcare centers across the city, with programs focusing on education and enrichment for all of the children in San Rafael, homeless response, and community well-being, so leading a compassionate and accountable homeless strategy, as well as partnering with the county, uh, and service providers to reduce unsheltered homelessness and maintain, um, our shared public spaces. Public works and infrastructure, this is the physical environment that we live with, it's maintaining our streets, our roads, sidewalks, parks, public facilities, and all of the, all the underground infrastructure, uh, that keeps our city running, as well as, uh, resiliency planning, flood and sea level rise adaptation, and then, of course, encouraging residents to submit their requests and to see, click, fix. Planning, building, and housing, so, you know, we have this thing called the general plan, which is like the ultimate document of how the city is going to grow and adapt over time, uh, and so implementing that, as well as supporting affordable and sustainable housing through permitting and policy code enforcement. We just had a whole presentation on the role of code enforcement as it relates to basically the entire environment in which the city exists. Parking services, everyone's favorite topic, managing citywide parking operations, issuing permits, citations, and the garages. And then on the administrative side, the in-house, uh, you know, crew, human resources and organizational development, so recruiting and supporting a diverse and talented workforce, promoting employee well-being, finance, technology, and open government, overseeing the budget, payroll, so we all get paid, making sure our IT systems are working, uh, and driving digital transfer, transformation, open data, and user-centered, user-centered public services. Kudos to Sean's team on that. City clerk and records management, so supporting city council operations, meetings like this one, as well as records retention and transparency and effort citywide. The city attorney's office, which is providing legal counsel and risk management, uh, and ensuring compliance and supporting ethical, transparent governance, sustainability, climate resiliency, implementing our climate change action plan and green infrastructure, planning for sea level rise, uh, and collaborating regionally on climate resilience, and then last but not least, intergovernmental legislative affairs, so this is collaborating and coordinating with all the other governmental agencies within this county, but then also elsewhere in the state. And so just wanna pause and say, in, in the comparison of all the things that are in the work plan, our team is balancing all of these other things that I just, uh, read off of my talking points to you all just now. So, uh, next slide. In terms of the work plan development, Christine touched on this a little bit, we've been working on this, uh, conceivably since January, with the first part, the first, uh, strategic plan development, but then once that was approved by the council, we started in the summer, working with Jacob Green Associates, who brought a technical expertise and objective lens and facilitated multiple workshops with a lot of our staff, directors, mid-managers, you all know them, everyone was involved in the development of this thing. And then these plans were reviewed for feasibility, interdepartmental coordination, budget alignment, uh, community engagement needs, and then also tracking when certain items are going to go to a council subcommittee or going to the full city council for feedback. So, um, from a project planning standpoint, and someone like me, I love to have all that stuff just, you know, mapped out. And so this is our first annual work plan, and, and, you know, it's taken us some time to get to this point because it was our first go at it, uh, and we have learned so much, uh, and we are prepared to start working on the year-two work plan, which will come to the council for adoption concurrent with the fiscal '26-'27 budget, and then so on and so forth. And, yeah, that's it for that slide. Uh, so some of the specifics on the work plan itself, it is based on fiscal year quarters, uh, and so quarter one is July, August, September, so on and so forth, as it's on the slide there. I've realized in talking about this that I orient my entire life around fiscal years. So, anyway, not everyone is like me, so we just wanna provide that clarity, uh, for the public. Yep, we'll go to the next one. So in terms of the work plan components itself, um, quarter-one objectives are listed as complete because that quarter has now passed, um, and most activities are spanning multiple quarters, a lot of this work is in process as we speak. The staff that are listed in the document, department directors are the accountable, if you think of like a racy project management chart, um, the accountable ones are the ones ensuring that the thing is going to get accomplished. And the staff who are listed in the gray as the lead are the responsible ones, they are the ones who are actually doing the task that's listed. Based on available resources, some of the activities and initiatives are scheduled to begin in year two or three of the strategic plan, but I will call out that this work plan that's before the council this evening includes 385 activities and initiatives for 84 objectives from 26 goals across the seven priority areas. So that's how granular the team has been, uh, identifying all the things that are going to do over the course of the next year. I'll get some water here. So, um, the rest of this presentation, we're gonna kinda dive into the city council's top work plan, uh, priorities, these were the items that, at the study session back in May, um, the council member, you, you all had kind of identified, these were kinda like the top things that you wanna see happen over the next year, and for the sake of time, we'll be highlighting a sampling of these initiatives that can receive the strongest consensus from the council as those highest priority items, and so we'll go to the next couple of slides here. So under priority area A, just wanna call out, you know, uh, A21, this is for creating and implementing a gateway beautification program where the team is scoping and mapping locations of our existing gateways and identifying future improvements, as well as, I know April and the team are working on designing, uh, and installing landscape improvements at the central San Rafael gateway coming off of 101 North in the downtown. Uh, and A41 is another, uh, hot topic, this is, uh, evaluating the existing downtown precise plan and selecting a consulting firm to update the design standards in tandem with all of the required CECR requirements and getting that work underway this fiscal year. I wanna note that, uh, in the work plan document, uh, there's a typo where we've included under A13, develop economic development incentive program, that should only list Streeteries, the special event program is actually gonna be found in A3.3. Uh, and so there's, you know, many ways to organize this stuff, and we're still kinda shuffling around, but we'll clean that one up. Going to the next slide. Priority area B, um, I wanna call attention to B2.2, so this is completing the traffic pilot in the Spinnaker neighborhood, implement proposed updates and present the findings to BPAC. This will also include Canal Street, so I wanna call out that it's not just gonna be on Spinnaker, but Canal is also included in that work. Uh, as well as under B23, uh, develop an implementation plan for AB413 and AB43, and engaging with the relevant committees and the public, uh, and implement and monitor the plans. Uh, and both of those objectives, B22 and B23, are examples of how the city's moving towards the implementation of Vision Zero, and, um, we'll be making some clarifying adjustments to include that Vision Zero language, it was in there, it dropped off somehow, but we'll get it back, uh, in there, cuz that's an important, uh, policy call from the council. Priority area C, so C11 includes developing a citywide EV charging infrastructure plan and completing the design and permit process, both of those tasks are actually done, um, which is exciting, and I know Cory and the team are working to apply for additional incentives and select a firm, um, to help with the implementation production of the plan, uh, as well as C24, uh, finalizing the coastal conservancy and governor's office sea level rise grant, I know Kate has been working tirelessly to get this across the finish line, uh, and they'll also be working to continue to engage the public and present to the city council, uh, in Q3-ish of the fiscal year, so January, February, March timeline. Oh, no, the next one. Priority area D, housing and homelessness, so D11, a lot of movement on this one as of late, so identifying potential sites for an interim, uh, shelter, identifying long-term funding, and engaging the community in partnership with the county of Marin to stand up the interim shelter site, interim shelter site out at, uh, Marydale. Uh, and then D32 is the Rooted in Marin Anti-Displacement Report, um, that's actually going to the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee, uh, uh, tomorrow, what day is it, right? Tomorrow. Um, and then also, uh, developing a homeless action strategic plan, uh, and as well as evaluating the city's camping organs, a lot of these things are gonna be happening concurrently with the work around Marydale and interim shelter. So, uh, priority area E, we can go to the next one here, quality of life, safety, wellness, and belonging. Um, so E1.4 is to assess the effectiveness of the PAC and increase engagement to augment community participant, participation at that, at those meetings, as well as to, um, redevelop SRPD's training plan to align with community needs, and then E24, increase staffing for the SRPD traffic unit, uh, and seek funding to expand education enforcement efforts and implement new speed limit laws, this is around dangerous driving and speeding throughout our streets and town. We'll go to the next one. And then priority area F, F21, adopt various policies related to records management and use of emerging technologies like AI and training staff on appropriate use, I know Sean and the team have been working on an AI policy that we've actually rolled out to the staff already, um, as well as, um, uh, let me see here, uh, continue to refine systems and processes and enhance the organization's cybersecurity capabilities. Uh, and then F33, complete kind of about-face, uh, is evaluating, uh, the potential addition of fees to support aging infrastructure like a stormwater fee, uh, and developing a framework for developers to support the city's infrastructure through the development process. The next one. Priority area G, um, so G2.3, conduct research and engage with the community and relevant service providers to draft and implement a plan to augment language access across the city, this is in addition to drafting a policy that explains the city's commitment to nondiscrimination, and both of these items will be coming to the city council for possible adoption later this fiscal year. And G32, which is to conduct research to benchmark equity metrics to develop a scoring rubric to help guide capital improvement spending across the city equitably, and so this is, um, stuff that I know that, um, Vetica and the team, uh, will be working on as well. As well as, uh, G33, expanding our strategic approach to ensure diversity of candidates for boards, commissions, and committees, I know Lindsay has done a lot of work in this space and will continue to do so. And G36, addressing the digital divide by pursuing broadband equity projects that improve Wi-Fi in the canal, so I know Sean and Vin, who's also here, have been working on that as well. So, a couple other, uh, things to note with the updated three-year strategic plan, um, one of the things, as we were going through the work planning process, we identified that there were a number of objectives that were just capital improvement projects, and we track capital improvement projects well within the CIP, and so what we're recommending is that the council re-adopt a strategic plan that takes these items out, so that we're just, we're tracking things like in one spot and not like multiple locations. And I know that Sean, uh, is working with April as a part of, you know, their ASANA build-out, which will be coming up in the presentation, to make sure that we're tracking our capital projects, uh, in a similar fashion to the way we are with everything else that's on the work plan. Uh, and with that, we'll go to the next slide. In addition, we have a couple of accomplishments, as I was joking with Christine today, it's not like we've just been sitting on our hands for the last three months, um, but the team has actually been working on making progress on these, uh, work plan items, and so just wanna call out that for A31, um, you know, we've conducted a call for artists and selected artists for the downtown public art projects, which is so exciting because they put up the signs of the potential art projects, uh, outside in the lobby. Uh, as well as B15, um, I know Joanna and the team have drafted the multi-year pavement management plan, and that will be coming before you all, uh, before the end of the year. B23, implementing new traffic safety laws, so we've developed an implementation plan for AB413 daylighting, um, as well as for AB43, putting up the new speed limit signs, which are all around town with the little yellow, not new, on it. Uh, C11, uh, we talked about, this is the EV charging infrastructure feasibility plan and final design and permitting for the corp yard, so this is for, uh, EV charging of our heavier duty and mid-duty trucks. But maybe some staff can get out there to use it for quick charging. C one, four, reducing community building energy use. So we had this come before the council, actually a couple of times this fall already. Proposed building reach codes ahead of the state law restricting such changes. So we were able to get that accomplished on time. We talked about the Marydale project and just at the last meeting, the council approved the contract for the capital project management firm for implementing measure P. F two, one, Paul and the team launched core financials for Tyler Munis ERP. So team of the year. A team of the year, getting ahead of myself, team of the quarter. And is, and, and the question is, and is it, is it fiscal year quarter or is it calendar year quarter? But, and then G two, one, developing a community engagement program fell and Carrie had been working on drafting the equitable engagement guide, which will be rolling out further in the fiscal year. So, next slide. So that's it for me, but I'm going to hand it off to Sean Mooney for the next part.
Hello, Mayor Kate, members of the council and members of the community who have still sticking with us tonight. My name is Sean Mooney, Director of Digital Service and Open Government. And that's a lot of stuff, right? We're doing a lot of things. And so we want to try to find out how we can, you know, track our progress on all of this really great work. And the, the thing to consider is was, as been mentioned before, this strategic plan includes both the, the goals and objectives of what we're trying to do, the work plan that we're trying to do. And we've also, for the last few years, we've been presenting performance metrics and we're, you know, moving towards being a much stronger data-driven city. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we're tracking that work plan and my, my colleague Vetica Ahuja is going to talk a little bit about how the metrics and data weave into it. You know, so as far as the work plan and our strategic plan, you know, we first want to kind of say like, are we, are we doing what we said we're going to do? Are we, you know, and how can we understand how we're making progress on the specific projects and programs? And how are those, how is that progress then impacting our accomplishments within the goals? So what we're doing right now is first of all, all the entire work plan, we're taking it out of that Excel spreadsheet and we've integrated into a sauna, which is a project management software as a service platform that allows us to look at both the, the tracking of the specific milestones and strategies that are out, that are laid out in the work plan and then map those directly to our goals and objectives. And so what we're going to be doing is we'll be working with those department leads to make sure that we are tracking the progress throughout the year. And then we, that progress will be presented to the council on a biannual basis aligned with a budget. And then we're also working through what the reporting looks like and for the communities that we can kind of find out or define like what that kind of regular reporting could look like, but definitely on a biannual basis, we'll be looking at that. And so for example, let's look at where we are priority area B, mobility and infrastructure. So here you can kind of, you can see, you know, within that portfolio of, of projects and programs and goals and objectives, you know, most of those are on track as, you know, this is a three-year strategic plan. So we're looking at all, we're looking at the work plan, but we're also getting all of the, the goals and objectives in, into, into this tool. So some things are on, some things are on hold because they aren't starting yet either this quarter or later quarters, or maybe even next year as we build this out. But we're already making progress. And as you can see, kind of the bottom half of that, we'll be able to, by coordinating with staff in updating the progress on these projects, we will be able to have better insight in a, and ideally, one of the goals here is to save staff time, right? So how many meetings do we need to have to find out where you're at? If we can at least kind of gauge our progress in a simple way and make it as simple for staff to do that, ideally that's going to save time and allow them to do the things that they need to do. So here you can see an example of specific projects or programs that are, that connect directly to objectives and the progress we've made already in achieving those. And so the, you know, the first stage is understanding, are we making progress on that work plan? And the tool within a sauna that we've set up now directly connects those projects to the objectives and the goals and the sub-goals within our work plan. So we'll be able to then trace as we make progress on those projects in the work plan. We'll also be able to get insights on how we're actually making progress on those goals throughout the course of the next three years. So here's just an example of, as you can see, priority B broken up into four different sub-goals and additional objectives that all map to those projects. As we make progress on that, you can see that we were already making significant progress on that three-year goal for mobility infrastructure and the related sub-goals. And so with that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to call Vetica up to the podium to talk a little bit how we are integrating performance measurement and outcomes and data into this process.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Thank you, council members and Mayor Kate. So Sean talked about how do we measure if we're doing what we said we're going to do? And we also want to be able to measure, are we achieving our, the city's and the council's intended outcomes of these projects? And then ultimately the intended impact on the community. So we're going to do this in two ways. We'll continue our performance metrics updates that we've been giving to the council. We've been doing that annually. We'll start doing that biannually. And then we will also, we've been doing this to a certain extent. We'll continue and deepen our analysis of those metrics on a more frequent basis to allow for data-driven decisions on a, on a day-to-day and monthly basis for teams. So the data team will be assisting staff and many staff are already doing this. So these are the, there are forty-one, so we've been adding and we adjusted the performance metrics since last year. There are forty-one performance metrics that map to the seven priority areas. So these are the performance metrics here for the first four priority areas. And we'll, and excuse me, there's a mistake on this slide. Instead of quality of life, that should be mobility and infrastructure. And the performance metrics for that are number of miles paved, citywide pavement condition index, average daily traffic and linear feet of sidewalks and bikeways constructed and maintained. So these forty-one metrics really capture the outcomes of the projects and the impact the project should have on the community. And so I've kind of described this a little bit, but we have our work plans and we have these metrics. And all of the projects within the work plan, or most of the projects in the work plan will map to at least one of the forty-one performance metrics. Some of the objectives are more, yes, we did it or no, we didn't. Like they're, we made a plan or we've done research or discovery. And so those won't necessarily map to a metric, but most of these objectives map to a metric. So we've put, I've continued Sean, Sean's example of mobility and infrastructure. I've just put three objectives up here with the associated projects. So the citywide bicycle and pedestrian plan, that will ultimately, it should ultimately increase the linear feet of sidewalks and bikeways constructed and maintained. We can see the pavement management program will ultimately lead to a higher citywide average pavement condition index. And the traffic signal upgrade will lead to, it should lead to less average daily traffic. And we can talk about, I mean, a couple of other examples are some of the priorities of the council was to develop and implement a program for enhancing and maintaining high visibility public spaces. We have performance metrics on C-click-fix data. So we'll be able to see ultimately in improving the public spaces should decrease the amount of complaints we're getting about potholes or about illegal dumping and trash in those locations. And so we could go and do this for most of the projects in the work plan. And so the way that we will present these performance metrics is how we've been doing it in the past. We'll be updating the performance dashboard that is public. We've been, as I said, we've been doing it on an annual basis. We'll start doing this on a biannual basis for the data that's available out of these forty-one metrics aligned with the budget update. Okay, go back to you.
All right. So to close out the presentation, we have a number of next steps here, which the first is looking at evaluating a level of effort for accomplishing each objective. This gets to, when we're having a discussion in a structure framework around reprioritization or emerging priorities, you want to be able to have some sort of currency to evaluate. You know, not all objectives are weighted the same. And so you could have one that comes in and the, the impact of it is, oh, we just have to push this off six months. Or you could have another one come in and it's, oh my God, we have to take these two or three things and push them out two years because this is going to require so much work. And so we'll be developing that process and that criteria later on this fall. We'll be coming back with the mid-year, the mid-year with, what do we call it? The mid-year update? Angela, come on. The mid-year update later this year. We'll be developing a criteria and process to determine if new emerging priorities arise. Further develop the integration of ASANA work plan progress reports and the city's overall data performance dashboards, as well as develop these biannual progress reports that will be able to be shared with the community in a very user-friendly fashion. And then here it is, present the mid-year update to the city council in early 2026 with the mid-year budget. And we'll make recommendations for reprioritizations if needed at that time. So the next slide here is the recommended action is that the city council adopt the city council's revised three-year strategic plan for fiscal twenty-five through twenty-eight and adopt the fiscal year 2025, 26 work plan. And just to call, because this isn't what's listed on the agenda, but to authorize the city manager to make administrative adjustments and clarifications to the work plan. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Well, kudos for taking something very complicated and complex and making it digestible for all of us and really explaining the process. So thank you. Questions? Oh, okay, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions. So in May, and I love this, thank you, as a project manager, this is my space. So thank you and thank you for bringing things into ASANA. In May, 2023, we did the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And so some of the items in that one are not reflected in this one. And I don't want to go through the details, but it's sort of, we have, we've gone through and had different goals and objectives around different areas. And I want to make sure that this is now reflective and as everything in there? Or does this supersede anything we've done already and approved in the past? Because they're different, because I, because I've used that, that plan sits at my desk and I look at that all the time. So that's one question. And I know Sean's your luck. Yeah, it's not, yeah. The second one is, and this may be for the data tracking. And it might, it sort of relates to that one as well, is if we're not going to do something, I'd rather see it in a sauna and have it classified differently. So it's not lost totally into the ether, so that we can at least see that this one has been removed. So when something comes in, if we can develop ASANA to be able to do that classification, so we can see that. And then the third one is as we're looking at the different items, some are hundred percent within our resourcing and control and staffing and everything else. And some of them require external partners. And we can prioritize it as, as a priority for us, but if we are requiring an external partner, have they also prioritized it? So that's a question. And if so, within ASANA, can we identify who those partners are? Because I'm looking at Chamber of Commerce, I'm looking at Canal Alliance, Community Action. We have so many different partners that we use. And I'm not seeing them actually, we're, we talk about it all the time, but I'm not seeing them reflected in the plan.
I'll start with the first one. I failed to mention earlier on, and it's on one of the slides, that part of the whole approach is to where, where in this three-year strategic plan is kind of, we went through the general plan, the housing element, the economic development strategic plan, all these plans that we have to say, we want to make sure we're capturing those things we already said we were going to do. So the, the, the three-year strategic plan was very intentionally use that process to assess what plans and where things are. So, and, and then the other piece that's interesting, as John mentioned, like we have core services and then we have specific priority initiatives. Some of the plans result in programs that are day-to-day operations and their core services. So they're not on the work plan anymore because they're, whatever the project or pilot was, came to completion and now it's part of our core services. I'll just point to objective A one, one, where you'll see like the expansion and of the GO program is part of that economic development. It's like kind of that next phasing. And, and so specifically to the ED strategic plan though, I think we can go back and make sure, and I don't know if, if Director Hinkle has any additional thoughts to this, just to make sure that we have actually captured everything that's in that particular plan. And if there's something that you feel like you're, you're not seeing here, like where does it live, then we're, we're happy to hear that feedback. I'll, I'll take a shot at the, your third question too, just to take it out of order, if you don't mind. You're absolutely right, Councilmember Kurtz, that we like, we can't do barely any of this alone without like the partners. And there are interdependencies where we may not be able to accomplish something in the timeframe that we set out to because of a capacity issue with a, with a stakeholder or a partner. That would be part of that biannual update where we might say, you know what? We all had plans to do this in this quarter, but they had, you know, something that came out of their control. And those are the sorts of things that we would elevate and communicate to all of you and the community if we have to make adjustments as we go. But I do, I, I like the idea and I think it's important that we're acknowledging these partnerships and that we're not doing it alone. So I think that's something we can look at the context. There, the strategic plan has a lot of other background information and we could incorporate and highlight that into that document, into the narrative.
Thank you.
And then just to answer your, the, the last question she would ask. So yes, so through the update process in ASANA, we'll be tracking the narrative of what's the status update? And then particularly if something is going to shift because it's a reprioritization or a partner isn't ready to engage or whatever the issue may be, that we're documenting that there for that transparency for you all, the community, but then staff too. So we know, oh, this is why we've had to shift because of these, you know, X, Y and Z dynamics.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Director Mooney, and thank you Assistant Director Stefanski for walking us through this. I know that you two are sitting here and presenting effectively, but it required the entire city staff to really roll this up over many iterations. So I appreciate that. My question is building on one of your last comments around the visibility of the work plan to the public. Can you describe or set expectations around how they might interact with it? Is it static? Is it dynamic? Is staff has access to? I'm just curious about that.
Right. So I think that one of the, the next steps for us is to really define like what that reporting structure looks like. The tool itself provides a couple of different ways we want to do it. We want to, we would like to be as transparent as possible. But we're going to kind of come back to you with the specifics about what that looks like.
Totally. That's super helpful to be, I'll, I'll say, I'll redirect how you're describing, which is we want to be flexible for the moment. But I'm hearing that it's going to be able to be available in some form, just to, to be determined.
Right. And as I said, specific to that tool, you know, like they've changed, the software tools change, you know? There was public facing elements of that that are no longer available. So we'll be working on whatever we can to make it as transparent as possible.
Press your vendor for answers. Thank you. And then as far as, you know, I think what I heard is annual and bi- biennial, biennial for, for metrics and then annual, I suppose for the, the work plan. I think my question, maybe more than a directive, is a question is, would those be opportunities to do reflection to say, hey, we had, here's how it looked at the beginning and here's how it looked at the end. Here are the deltas. Here's what we learned. I'd love to, I, I imagine we would do that. But with, with these kinds of things of retooling prioritization, I think it would be a wonderful exercise for us in the public to be able to say, here's the journey of, of why something, well, for better, lack of a better word, crashed our schedule and we responded accordingly.
I'll start. I think that's, that's spot on. That's exactly the, the process that we're trying to develop. We're trying to, you know, do that thing where you build the plane as you're flying, as they say, we can't stop time. So hence, you know, being a quarter into the work plan. But, and I just want to make a clarification, the annual work plan, we will give a progress update on that at the same time we give the mid-year budget update in early 2026. So, and we'll have performance met, metrics updates at that time. So you'll hear all of those things at the same time, because the budget needs to be aligned with the things that we say we're going to do, right? So you'll have an update on each one of those three things at mid-year budget and at the fiscal. and at the fiscal year budget process for the, the next fiscal year's budget. Is that helpful?
Totally.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you guys have anything to add to that?
Oh, I guess what I would add also is that, you know, we're continuing to evolve and mature our data program and, you know, continuing to look for opportunities to gain insights on the data. And we'll look for those opportunities to present to you as, as, as is needed.
Thank you, Councilmember Micah.
Yes, thank you so much. This is, this is amazing, just getting all the, the plan together and then having the metrics, working with Asana and being able to get all the results. I think it's going to be fabulous. Quick question. One of the slides, John, when you were presenting towards the end, you mentioned that there were like four projects that they were out of the strategic plan because those are capital projects, but it doesn't. So how are you tracking those, I guess, if they are not in the strategic plan?
So we're tracking those through the CIP, through our established CIP process. But in addition to that, as we're going through and building out this in Asana, I know Sean has been working with the Public Works Department to be doing something similar in terms of key milestones of the CIP projects that are up for a given fiscal year. So those four that aren't going to be in this work plan will be captured over in the, the CIP.
Okay. So when we are looking at like timelines for projects, there will be like basically the strategic plan versus the capital campaigns.
Can I add a little bit to that? I think that one of the, one of the things that we, we hear a lot and that we've tried to clarify here is this balance, the sweet spot between maintaining our operations and the strategic work plan. So I think in order to be able to be more clear to the community and you all about that, it's important for us to be able to look at those things together. So when we look at priority area B, our mobility and infrastructure, to be able to see how we're delivering on those goals and objectives, you know, specific in the projects and programs related to it, we'd like to be able to side that sideways, say like, oh yeah, and we're doing all these other things. So we'll continue to work on refining that and make sure that we can do our best to account for the, all of the work that we're doing across the city.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any questions? I don't have any questions either, so I will open up public comment on this item. If you'd like to offer any insight or have any questions, now's your opportunity. Welcome.
Mayor Kate, City Council members, my name is Sherna Deemer. I'm president of the Monosito Area Residents Association. As I believe you know, the Monosito area is one of the few neighborhoods in San Rafael that does not have a park, a problem that is addressed, addressed in your general plan 2040 and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan of 2023. So as you discuss the city council's three-year strategic plan for fiscal year 2025-2026, right? We're talking about, I come with good news relative to your priority area E, Quality of Life. The Neighborhood Association has identified some land that could be used as a small park in the Monosito area. The property under discussion is an unused quarter of the area of Embarcadero Way and Mission Avenue by San Rafael High School. This space is owned by San Rafael City School District. Mara has discussed the use of this property as a city park with Bob Marcucci, Deputy Superintendent of San Rafael City School District. He said the district is open to the idea, but would need a proposed design before making a commitment. Fair enough. We had a joint meeting with Catherine Kufus, San Rafael's Library and Recreation Director, and with April Miller of the city's Department of Public Works. They expressed interest in the project, saying the first step wouldn't need to do a feasibility study. We've held meetings with neighbors who would be the most affected by the park, and they're virtually all in favor of it, quite excited by the project, in fact. And we've made a presentation about these ongoing talks to the city's Parks Commission. So we come to the city council tonight with the intent of informing you of the discussions underway and to ask you to ensure funding for the initial feasibility study in fiscal year 2025-26. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah. Hello again. I'm Diana Benitez, the Senior Community Development Planner at Canal Alliance. Thank you to staff for working on this. I know it's a lot of work and we've already seen great strides in the Community Engagement Plan work with Kelly, Carrie Fell and others. And also super excited to see the data and performance metrics tracking happening and the progress reports that will soon come for us to review. My comments relate to the work plan goal for D3, which is to evaluate and consider implementation of specific housing policies and programs that promote fair housing practices, ensure housing habitability, and foster diverse housing communities that accommodate all income levels. And when we were looking at the work plan, we just wanted to say that it's time for action on tenant protections. The work plan talked a lot about doing community engagement and research, and we've been doing that for a number of years now. We're super excited that a few of you will be seeing the Rooted in Marin report tomorrow and then eventually the whole council will be getting to look at it. And we just want to make sure that the housing element commitments to strengthen tenant protections keep moving forward into action. And also wanted to see work outlined for housing policy related to the preservation and production of affordable housing. It's something we desperately need as part of a comprehensive strategy to address the housing crisis. So just wanted to ask for you all to consider updating the work plan to commit to action on an expedited timeline for tenant protections and to include commitments to develop that comprehensive strategy that encompasses affordable housing, preservation and production. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not seeing any at all. Close the public comment. I don't know if staff wants to respond to anything that was just shared.
I respond to Sherna's comment around the Monosito neighborhood and, I mean, we understand that the neighborhood is park deficient, and I know Catherine and April have met with them. That would be something in the context of a work plan would be actually captured through the CIP process, through our Measure A allocation approach as well as, because anything relating to the development of a new park out there would have to be taken in the context of the available funding we have through Measure A.
Thank you. And I'm just looking at, thank you for the comments around tenant protection. I'm actually looking at the work plan, and I think this is how it's intended, if I'm reading it properly. We're in Q2 now, for all the reasons that we talked about. The presentation's happening and the presentation of the city council is slated for Q3, which, in city speak, it's taken us a while to get here, but that's pretty fast. I mean, not fast, but it's outlined of where we're going. So that's really how this is intended. So going back to the previous conversation about how do we have this in an outward-facing document that's easy to read and for people to find that information? I know that's what you've already talked about working on. Additional comments, Vice Mayor, comments on this item?
I am delighted to make comments on this stuff.
Okay, do it.
This is fantastic. It gives me the proof, not that I've needed proof, to tell everyone that we have the best staff ever. And now I've got the absolute proof. The mayor acknowledges the staff. We couldn't do anything without you. We would be nothing. And, and you're just awesome. You're just absolutely, this is so light years ahead of what, what all, everyone else is doing. And we're getting stuff done. And, and now we can prove it and print it out. There you go. This is, this is amazing. It's going to lay the foundation. I know the first time around it's a little rickety, but when we start making those lists of accomplishments and showing the, the Asana, you know, what is going on? When we've had to change course, you know, this calamity happened, so we had to do these other things instead. So the whole thing is, is going to be amazing and really help our constituents understand what government is doing, like by, by the line items. So fantastic. Couldn't be happier with it. I'm looking forward to going through those quarters with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah, would you like to go?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiment from Vice Mayor. I think it's just putting together, combining all the plans and all the activities in one place and being able to now be specific about the next three years, now the work plan for next year with all the tracking. And just being able to showcase our accomplishments, I think is so important. And, and however we can, so the plan is there for the community to see, but how can we communicate everything that's happening with the, you know, with the community? So they can also see everything that's getting done. So it's pretty much what Vice Mayor said. It's nice to have a plan that we can follow, but also being able to track the success and everything that's happening. So huge thank you to everybody, you know, who has put together the plan. I think for an organization to have, this is like a map of the organization where everybody is working together, you know, to accomplish the goals. And that's, I think, very hard to do. So congratulations and I keep going. You know, I'm a man like, I want to go specific. How about this one, that one? But I know there is a map and I can, I can follow that and be patient and, you know, just keep doing the great work. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's, this is, it's standard to have this in so many businesses, but I know in city worlds and, and government, it's not. And so what seems really basic, it's really not that basic. I mean, and, and so I think we're so appreciative of having this work. That said, I do have some questions around, or comments. I know we can't assume anything. So as I go through just holistically around the whole plan, we don't have any mention of intentionally around older adults. And I think that's a mess. And I think we need to figure out, I, so again, I don't want to assume that it's already built in there because you've been very, very clear and specific on the items. And so I want to make sure that if it's intentionally there or unintentionally, we want to make, it's called out. Again, around the partnership and collaborations, thank you for bringing that forward. I think that's hugely valuable and important. And then working with those partners to make sure it's prioritized as well. So that we can show them, look, this is our priority. Is it your priority? Because we need you. And we're going to work with you, just as we had that conversation with the county in terms of the ordinance, right? That we have to have that partnership. You're doing day-to-day job. A lot of this, I was trying to think, like, if we did nothing on this plan, you'd still be busy. Right? So this is, I recognize that this is the above and beyond plan and, and a caveat on Q2, as a project manager, Q2 is so deceiving because you have the holidays. It's really, and now we have one week left of October. You have two weeks in November and maybe a week and a half in December, and then people are gone. So when I looked at the, the whole report and, and I thank you for sending me the file and I put it into Excel and I played with it, because that's what I have to do. There's already a lot of things in Q2 and I'm, I'm just raising that as a, really? And then another one is, and I know this will come forward as well. And I, I always get torn in terms of, do we do studies and do we need to do more investigation? Or do we already have it? And do we have the expertise? And do we have the expertise already in the table or in the community? Or have we already done that report? And so I was also doing some filtering in terms of identifying how many times did we say studies or investigate? You know, so I just want to make sure that as those come up, do we really need to do those? Because as we know, we've gone back and we've looked at, some of those already exist. So yay, we can see that now, right? We couldn't see that before to be able to even bring those questions forward and those comments. So thank you, because this is going to be a huge tool for all of us.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Stefanski and Director Mooney. It's great. I'm going to echo the Vice Mayor's sentiments of fantastic. I'm thrilled when I see this. I'm going to self-declare that I'm a civics nerd. And when I see things like strategic words connected with data and KPIs and metrics, and that we're going to measure it and we're going to be able to move things around and crash schedules and tell the story afterwards to our community, I get very excited. We're already setting an expectation for how we're going to be accountable without holding to a fixed plan. That's very exciting. And of course, now we're just underway. So I appreciate you setting this expectation. And I think it's bold. And it's the kind of expectation that our, our community, I think, should expect as we are now almost a quarter into this century. You know, I appreciate the mention at the very top of the presentation that everyone already has an operational job here. Very few people are capital project only. So this is, a lot of the stuff is what's weaved between your operational duties. So this is a very bold plan. I know we go bold every year, but this is, this is very exciting to be able to have it tracked in this way. My sense is, is that this is what we always did to a degree. But the, the tight coupling between objectives and metrics, or in the case of how, that I could put it, that there's a, there's a binary, like we're going to do it or not do it. This is very exciting. I think what it allows us to do is more efficiently. Maneuver when we need to, rather than pause everything, well, how, how long do we need to figure out what we're going to do next? I think we're still going to have to do that, but my sense is, is that we're going to be able to respond a lot faster. This is very exciting. So I am eager to see next steps and learn from what we do. Thank you.
And I'll just build on what's already been said. This is amazing. I don't, there, there's no other town in Marin County even coming close to this work. So John, Sean, Medica, thank you for all that you've done. And for all the department heads that worked with your teams, this is so comprehensive because so many people have worked on it and it shows through really clearly. And as Councilmember Hill just was saying, this is in addition to your core service responsibilities that you do every single day. So really having this tool to help prioritize, and I really appreciated at the beginning of the presentation, you talked about these two things. Thanks, State, for 707, and we had to reprioritize, City Clerk had to do that. And so we are going to hold ourselves accountable and be disciplined about that. Because to say to the staff over and over, more, 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 is just not sustainable. And it's not good for the folks that work here and that make the city hum. And, and we're not able then to deliver what we want to deliver. And at the end of the day, this is a communication, accountability and transparency tool. And it is phenomenal. So thank you all. With that, I would entertain a motion. It looks like there's two motion. Vice Mayor, with your exuberance, would you like to read the first motion?
With my exuberance combined with my reading glasses, yes.
Hey, do that. Do that.
I move that we adopt a resolution, the resolution adopting the city council's revised three-year strategic plan for fiscal years, wait a minute, no, I missed one, haven't I? I move that we adopt the resolution adopting the city council's revised three-year strategic plan for fiscal year 2025-2028 and work plan for fiscal years 2025-26.
I guess I was second. Move, and second, enroll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaden Scaloni.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. I know it was complicated the way it's written here. It's just, it's, it's, it's. One motion.
We got it done.
Thank you for that. So before we adjourn in memory of Mark Milberg, there's open time for public expression. So is anything not on tonight's agenda? And tonight's agenda was comprehensive. Let's just say that. You really could have given public comment during any agenda item. Not seeing any. Tonight, we will adjourn in honor of Mark Milberg, who was deeply saddened to learn of his sudden passing, as I know many of us were. Over the past few years, I've had the privilege of serving alongside him on both TAM and SMARTboards and come to know him as someone whose sunny disposition and thoughtful questions always elevated the discussion. Mark showed up wholeheartedly for his community, leading with kindness, curiosity, and an unwavering commitment to public service. His presence will be greatly missed by all who had the honor of working with him. Our deep condolences to his family and may his memory be a blessing. A vigil to celebrate Mark will be held this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Nevada City Hall. And you can just show up if you're so inclined. So tonight's meeting is adjourned in honor of Mark Milberg.